Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We're glad you're joining us, joining us online, joining us on Facebook, YouTube, and those that are here in person. We're delighted that you're here this morning. If you look at the order of business, when you walk through the door today, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to do exactly that so you can follow along with the items that we're working through as a commission. And if you're ever interested in looking at the supporting documents that help inform our decisions, you can find all of that information online at sedgwickcounty.org. I think this packet for this week is about 270 pages, so thanks for good reading. Before we get started today, I do want to acknowledge, we do have a lot of really special guests here today. I see a lot of people from Kansas on our flight, our veterans. God bless you. Thank you for being here today. We have a proclamation where you guys are going to be mentioned, but I wanted to acknowledge your presence here today. We're very grateful that you're here. Also, I want to acknowledge Matt Ginsby, City, Keachai City Administrator. Welcome, sir. And an old friend to the county commission, former county commissioner David Dennis is here. So we're delighted to see you, sir. Welcome, everybody. Okay, with that being said, we've got a lot to do today, so let me officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, June the 4th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Hey, good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. As you all are well aware, we had a lot of flooding yesterday. Julie Simpson, Director of Emergency Management, is here to give a recap on the storms and how different agencies responded to the call. Julie?
Hey, Julie, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Yes, Julie Simpson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. Yes, we had a very busy day yesterday. Our first responders and our 911 folks were extremely busy. We had a lot of calls between 12 noon and 4:00 PM yesterday. It was kind of the peak of the impacts of having the several inches of rain. So we had anywhere from an inch and a half of rain on the western part of county to almost seven inches on the eastern part of the county in a very short amount of time, and that resulted in some flash flooding, which means the flooding comes fast and furious, and then it kind of disappears just as quickly. Happy to report, a lot of the water has receded. We don't have any streets that are flooded that I'm aware of. A lot of the areas within the Wichita metro area have been reopened. I do want to mention that we did do a disaster declaration locally, just so that way we could have access to state resources. Fortunately, we were able to pretty much manage this response locally. We did not need to seek assistance outside of the county. Excuse me. Also with that, I want to clarify that we did not also qualify for any individual assistance. So folks who have flooded basements or maybe a little bit of damage to their properties, I'm not able to give them assistance through state or funds. What we are doing is if we have folks that have damage to report, is we're asking them to call 211, and we're going to try to coordinate volunteer agencies that provide services to help muck out houses and help clean up basements. We've got to see what the need is first, but we're going to try to align some resources to help folks out that have been impacted. So 211 is that number, and then our United Way partners will work with us to let us know what the impact is and what resources we may be able to bring in for folks. I do want to share that we want to talk about flash flood emergency. This is a very rare weather term that we use, and we did, the National Weather Service did issue a flash flood emergency yesterday, which means it's an exceedingly rare situation where there's potential catastrophic damage from flash flood. We knew there was a widespread area from Valley Center, Park City, kind of down through the eastern side of Wichita that was having very quick floods happening on the streets that were getting people kind of caught off guard. So they set off the wireless emergency alerts, folks' cell phones that were in those areas should have went off yesterday to let them know of this emergency and to pretty much stay off the roads. Flash flood warning is kind of a more slower paced. We know that homes and businesses may flood, but it's not as urgent as a flash flood emergency is. So that's kind of the difference in terms. And the reason I really want to bring this up is we've got more weather expected tomorrow night, another maybe one to two inches of rain. So I just want folks to be aware, our ground is very saturated, so even another inch or two could have some issues tomorrow night. So please stay attuned, have a plan as far as if you need to seek shelter to higher ground, having an idea of where that is and how to get there. That is really all I have. Like I said, I wanted to make sure folks knew to call 211 if they need help with their homes, and then also be aware of weather expected for tomorrow night as well. And then I also wanted to thank everyone, those who did heed the warnings yesterday and stayed off the streets. We want to reiterate again, do not go past barricades. They're there for a reason. They're there for safety and not to drive through any kind of flooded waters. If you can't see the pavement, you don't know if that road is still there, and you cannot tell how deep that water is. So we said that multiple times in that press conference yesterday. Keep reiterating that. It's not worth it. You're going to stall out in some of this water, and we just don't need that.
Julie, thank you for all the work that you did. We were in staff meeting yesterday and started getting messages that there were some flooding issues mounting about 11 o'clock, and you went right into action. So I want to thank you, your team, want to thank 911, who filled in a significant number of calls, as mentioned, yesterday. EMS was very involved, Wichita Fire, Sedgwick County Fire, Wichita Police. There were just a lot of organizations that had to rally really, really quickly to do this. And I also want to publicly thank the collaboration that took place. We had different cities that were working on behalf of other cities and trying to deploy resources to make sure everyone was safe. And we've been a little asleep a little bit because of drought, but flooding is a significant issue. I mean, many people in this room might remember the Halloween flood in 1998 and what it did to West Wichita in particular. So we've got to stay, we've got to stay not just reactive in these things, make sure the response is good, but we also got to be preventative. So in your office helps to inform us of what that looks like. Couple questions. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Julie. I just want to echo the similar comments. I think you guys did a great job with the coordination. 911, I think they had reached their average daily calls by like 6 o'clock, and they still kept coming in, so appreciate all the coordination there. Sedgwick County Fire, the Red Cross, it was a great coordinated effort, so thank you.
Okay, Julie, thanks again. Keep us posted.
Okay, we have two important events this Saturday, June 7th. The Sedgwick County Health Department is holding a no-cost measles vaccination clinic, that's the MMR vaccine, at the Evergreen Recreation Center at 2700 North Woodlawn from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for adults and children ages 1 to 17. Infants 6 to 11 months can be vaccinated if traveling to an area of high risk for measles. No appointment is necessary, but we will take the last walk-ins at 1:30. Adults need to bring an ID and vaccination records if you have them. Call 316-660-7300 with any questions, and Spanish speakers can call 316-303-8042 for assistance. Also Saturday, Environmental Resources is holding a free household hazardous waste remote collection event at Textron Aviation at its East Central Plant. This will happen from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is for residents who can safely dispose of old paint, batteries, motor oil, antifreeze, cleaners, fertilizer, or other chemicals. Items that will not be accepted include tires, electronics, ammunition, and waste generated by businesses. The drop-off location is in the Beach Craft Division Parking Lot E at Gate C6. Visit the Environmental Resources webpage at sedgwickcounty.org for a full list of what is accepted and what is not. Next up, we're going to have quite a bit of county good news today. First off, I'd like to start with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. They have recently been given the award American Jail Association's Correction Supervisor of the Year, and I have Colonel Schechter here to talk more about that and introduce this person. Sir?
Hey, Colonel, welcome.
Thank you. Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Sergeant Jacob Tannehill was recognized on May 20th down in Fort Worth at the American Jail Association's 44th Annual National Conference and Jail Expo as the Correctional Supervisor of the Year. The award is meant to honor individuals who inspire and promote excellence among jail staff and excellence in the field of jail services and corrections. Jake joined the sheriff's office back in July of 2015, so next month will be his 10 years with us, so he's been great with us. In 2022, he has promoted to Sergeant. Jake holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice along with a master's degree in leadership. He has the FBI Lita Trilogy Award, has attended the National Jail Leadership Command Academy. One of our outstanding supervisors in the jail, really inspires people around them and inspires greatness amongst our people. As you know, retention's approved in the sheriff's office, and leaders like Jake is one of the reasons I believe that people are staying and having great people to work for. So come on down, Jake.
Yeah.
Good morning. Thank you for the kind words. This is a different level of intimidation, to be sure. I'm not used to looking, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for having me, Commissioners, everybody. I'd like to thank Sheriff Easter, Colonel Schechter, and of course, the board for all your support for our agency. We have been working very hard the last few years to boost morale and kind of get attitudes where they need to be. It's not always easy working inside a jail, but it's what we do. It's got to happen, and it's getting better. It is. I enjoy my career. I've had a very good career, thankfully, and I had a whole spiel of things I wanted to say, but I'm forgetting. So thank you for having me, and I was incredibly honored to represent the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office on a national level. So, yeah, thank you guys very much.
Sergeant, thank you, sir. We appreciate it, and to be recognized nationally like this is a big deal. So we're grateful for your work. I know that just a couple of years ago, sheriff's office down over 120 deputies, and I think at this point, and I'm not going to look at the sheriff because I might get this wrong, but I think it's less than a dozen people that you're down now, and a lot of that is exactly what you said. It's morale building, it's team building, it's creating an environment. Compensation has something to do with it, but it's more than compensation. It's leadership. It's leadership from the sheriff, leadership from the colonel, and leadership from you. So we're grateful for all you're doing for this community. We feel that impact, and you've stabilized something that was desperately in need of stabilization. So God bless you, man. Thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody.
Also, for county good news, we're going to, we've had the opportunity to recognize two employees for Hometown Heroes this, in the month of May, and that was through Cake TV and the Wichita Wind Surge. They were each given personalized baseball jerseys and four tickets to the Wind Surge home game, where a video about them played on the big screen, and later on Cake News. At this moment, we're going to introduce each hometown hero. First is Joshua Zimmerman. If you want to head on down, sir. Josh works at the Department of Corrections and serves with the Kansas Army National Guard. We're going to show a quick interview that he did with Cake News. Half a second. Here we go.
At his day job, Joshua Zimmerman is a second shift supervisor at the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections. Maybe not a job that's too appealing for many others, but Josh says he really enjoys it.
Some days are tough, but seeing clients' reactions when they do their final sign-out and then coming back later saying that our help on with them was the biggest motivator, it makes you smile.
Those in custody, also known as clients, are allowed to leave to go to work and then check back in. That's what Zimmerman supervises, working on reintegrating people back into society after possibly being in jail or incarcerated.
I'm helping somebody that was at the bottom, and they're trying to build their life back up, and it's a struggle. I know every single person go through crisis and struggles throughout their life, especially in their adult ages. So if I can be essentially like a stepping stone to them, that's all I care about.
And at the same time, Zimmerman is also part of the Army National Guard, something he's done for almost nine years now.
He signed up to pay for college, the Kansas Army National Guard does that, so I was like, okay, sign me up.
He's been on two deployments so far, and he's just five months removed from getting back from his last one.
I went to Kuwait, which is known as pretty much the hottest country on earth.
He even told us that some days it gets up to 136 degrees out there, but it's something he'd do again, given the chance.
Being away from family and decent food, it's definitely a struggle, but going back to the friendships, if I wasn't with the guys I was with, or the females I was with, it would not have been as good as it was.
And back home now, Zimmerman adds that being nominated was still surprising, but obviously means so much to him.
It touched a bit of my heart, that Steve Stonehouse recommended me, so it was a nice little call.
Again, Joshua is here, and we just want to take a moment to thank him for all of his services to Sedgwick County in multiple ways.
Yes, yep.
I was not prepared for a speech or anything like that, but I want to say thank you to Steve Stonehouse for nominating me, and Stephanie, and for everybody that brought me up and taught me throughout the years with the county, and especially in the military. So I appreciate everybody that reached out, assisted, and coached me up.
That's great. So I want to publicly thank Cake TV and the Wind Surge and the Hometown Heroes. This is a big deal. By the way, we can really honor the people that do incredible service, and man, what you do in corrections and the stability you provide there and the benefit to this community, I think we need to tell that story a little better of all the corrections does. But I want to thank you also for your service. Sometimes it feels hot up here, but not as hot as where you've been, and thank you. You are the exact person we want serving this community in the roles that you're in. I mean, you are it, man. You're the prototype, and for this community to honor you as a hometown hero, it's well deserved. So God bless you. Thank you for all you're doing, and we'll keep supporting the work that you do.
Thank you.
Our next hometown hero is Deputy Paul Scarpita. He works for the sheriff's office in the detention facility. If you don't mind coming down, sir. He was injured on April 14th when an inmate threw scalding hot water on him, yet the deputy still managed to subdue the prisoner. We also have a quick interview with him as well.
First off, because I'm not used to the spotlight, I guess. I didn't think I'd be the main character one day.
This week's hometown hero is Deputy Paul Scarpita with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Department. It's a position he's had for almost two years now.
So I've always wanted to be in law enforcement, and I think the jail side was an interesting gateway to get into it.
Last month, while on duty, Deputy Scarpita was attacked by an inmate. First with scalding hot water.
I kind of got into like a shock, and then everything just went white. I couldn't see anything.
A hot pot that looks a lot like this, full of water, was poured on him.
And then next thing you know, I got punched in the face.
Even after this, Scarpita still knew that he had to control the situation. The deputy eventually got the inmate into hand restraints and took him out of the pot by himself.
Couldn't feel my body anymore. I had no motion of any in my limbs anymore.
Scarpita was then rushed to the hospital with burn scars all over his body, and after two weeks of rest, he was eventually back at work.
We have, again, Deputy Scarpita here. I believe he does have a few words he would like to share.
Yes, please.
First off, good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'd like to first use this opportunity to thank the sheriff's office for their support for when all this happened, and their continued support even after it's happened. I think all of that, it's really helped me get better and get to the place where I'm at now. I appreciate them and everyone that supports me and helps me. What happened to me was very tragic and unexpected. The individual had intent to hurt me or hurt someone, and I'm proud of myself that I was able to stop the threat and control it and prevent further harm to myself and potential harm to others. My sense of duty was achieved that day, and I'm also proud of myself that I maintained my professionalism the entire time.
Yeah.
That meant something to me. I hope that I can continue to serve the community for many years to come, and I personally believe if I can just make a small difference or a significant... believe if I can just make a small difference or a significant difference in someone's life, then that's all the meaning I need. Thank you all for this opportunity.
Deputy, hang tight. Real quick, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much. No one should have to go through, but you're the right kind of person in that position because your gut instinct, even though you had harmed yourself, you still took care of the situation. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Deputy, we're proud of you too. And I know the sheriff's proud of you. And he was giving us updates after all this happened, and we were prayerful for you and your recovery. And Commissioner Bluebaugh is right, you're the exact person we want in there. Broken people do broken things, and we need people like you to intervene and stand in the gap. So, thank you for your service. God bless you. So glad you're back. So glad you're healing. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to also, what was Sergeant Jake's last name? I didn't catch that.
Tannehill.
Tannehill? Thank you so much. I just want to say, all three of you, I'm sure we all probably feel the same sentiment, but I just can't be silent here as I listen to these stories about the bravery, the service, the professionalism, really the ambassadorship that you share with this community and really even beyond. I'm so proud of all of you, proud of our sheriff and Colonel Schechter for getting such good people in our positions and even in the Stephen Stonehouse in the corrections area. But I'm so proud of you, all three of you. I just wanted to share that. I'm incredibly happy that you guys have chosen Sedgwick County. You guys could probably work anywhere. You're great professionals, and I'm just, I'm grateful to have you in our team, in our organization. And when things are difficult, you did a wonderful job, you know, doing what you needed to do, but you're ambassador. You make our organization look fantastic. So, thank you for your service.
Yeah. Can you honor our hometown heroes again?
We've had a lot of good news today, but the last one is pretty exciting as well. We are finally excited to unveil our beautiful wooden table made for us by the students at Wichita Heights High School. Here to tell the tale is former Commissioner David Dennis and why the wood is such a significant thing for our county. Sir?
Commissioner, welcome back, sir.
In half a moment. All right. You're up.
Chairman Beatty, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Meister, Commissioner Bluebaugh, it's an honor to be standing on this side of the podium today. People often ask me if I miss it. What I miss are the people and the staff. You've got a great staff, and you've just seen that over and over today. Thank you. Also, I'm glad that you're honoring Honor Flight today. I had the pleasure to fly on Honor Flight 98, and it's a great opportunity for each and every one of our veterans that served during the Vietnam era. Thank you for being here today. But what I'm really here to talk about today is this beautiful table that you'll see as you walk into the room today and how that came about. Only thing I've got is a few notes on names because I wanted to make sure that I tried to hit the highlights of the people that made this table possible. It all started in September of 1998. One of our staff members didn't like a beautiful oak tree that was in the parking lot out behind the old courthouse, the new courthouse, and talked the then county manager into cutting it down. I thought that was kind of a tragedy to lose a tree that was probably there before that that courthouse was built. And I thought somehow we need to memorialize that tree and what it meant to everybody that saw it each and every day as they parked back behind that parking, in that parking lot. And so, I talked to Andrew Dilts and Tanya Cole facilities about how that we can salvage the wood out of that tree. And instead of just cutting it down and chopping it up into small pieces like they were going to do, they cut it down and we got massive pieces out of that that could then be milled into wood. As we move forward on it, a couple other people thought that the wood was kind of cool. Judge Fleetwood, if you remember him from the 18th Judicial District, he's also a woodworker. He wanted some of the large limbs that he could use to turn into some, I think, some bowls and some other things that he was making. So, how do we turn that big tree into some wood that we can do something with? Well, luckily, I have a good friend over in Kingman County named Kenny Bach. I want to make sure everybody knows Kenny Bach. He's kind of a wild man, but he's a fantastic individual. A couple years before that, he was in the hospital, but he just bought a brand-new woodmill. And he called me up one day and said, would you build it for me? Because I can't. I said, sure. It'd probably take me an afternoon. Took me a week, because this was a big woodmill. And so, I knew he had a woodmill. And so, now how do we get it over to Kingman County to get this turned into wood? So, then David Spears was Director of Public Works, and his staff loaded some of these big pieces. And these are long. These are like eight, 10, 12 foot long and yea big around. And they hauled it over to Kenny, and he milled that into slabs for us. And from there, Public Works took it over to the Andale Yard, and they laid it out in the Andale Yard and put spacers in between it so it could air dry, because this was a green tree. And then they banded it and put sandbags on top of it so that it wouldn't warp. And we let it sit there for about a year. And from there, the next time I saw it, it was over at the West Yard. And so, now it's 2019. And so, how do we then turn it into something that we can use? Well, my vision was, if you remember the old boardroom that we had at the old courthouse, we had a nice place for the commissioners to sit, and down in front of that was a nice table, and the county manager and the clerk and the attorney, and back then, the Director of Public Works, all sat at that table. I said, well, why don't we have a table so that in the future, because way back in 2018, 2019, we knew that someday we were going to have us a different facility. We're still in temporary facility today, but someday it'd be a permanent facility, and we could put that, we could design the bench to match the table. So, well, what kind of table do we build? Well, luckily, I get to meet a lot of people, and I was over in the USD 259 Superintendent's Conference Room, and got a beautiful table that's got USD 259 logo inlaid in the top of the table. And I said, where was that built? And they said, it was built by the students at Heights High School. And so, luckily, again, the principal at Heights High School was Sherman Paget, and he was my principal when I taught at North High School after I retired from Air Force. And so, I went out and saw him, and he's got a beautiful table in his conference room and his office, and it's got the Falcon logo inlaid in the top of it. So, we went back and we talked to the teacher and said, if we give you all the wood, then you're going to get way more wood than it's going to take to build this table. Would you build us a table with the Sedgwick County logo in the top of it? I said, sure, not a problem. Remember the years that I'm talking about? This is September of 2019. So, they did get started on it. The legs that are on here, I saw them here about a year ago, and that was really all that was finished, because in 2020, what happened? COVID. And they shut schools down. And so, nothing happened for a number of years. So, I knew I wasn't going to run for reelection, but this was still in the back of my mind, and Linda Baker, our secretary upstairs, she reminded me of it a number of times. And I did miss one group, and that's Lynn Packer and his staff. They're the ones that hauled all that wood from the West Yard over to Heights High School, and they said they'd build it. So, now it's, a little bit was built, but in the meantime, Sherman Paget had left Heights High School. The teacher was gone, no longer there, and nobody knew anything about this table. And so, we wandered around back in their shop class area, and we found those legs that are under this thing. But that was about all that was left of it, and that was about a year ago. And luckily, the principal is now Eric Flippa, and he taught at North High School with me. So, we've got a contact again. And so, I went back out to him, and we wandered around, and we found those legs and said, well, would you build it? Well, sure. Well, we wanted the logo on the top of it. If you walk out, you'll see the Sedgwick County logo is in the top of it. So, then I had talked to Nicole Gibbs and her communication staff, because how do you get an electronic version of that logo that you can inlay in the top of it? Well, that was simple. That was not a problem. They sent an electronic version over to Heights High School, and that's how this electronic version was put in the top of it. So, Eric Flippa and a lot of students from Heights High School put this together. And the picture you see up here is when they presented that to us about a month ago, where we were able to take possession of it. And so, it brings the history of that tree that was part of the Sedgwick County's history in our parking lot in the old, in the new courthouse. And it's something that they can use. Hopefully, someday we have a nice bench that the commissioners can work from, and they can utilize this in a new area. But I wanted to let you know that there's quite a history that went behind that. I think I hit the highlights of most of the people who were involved, but it took a team to do that, and I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to tell the history of that. Thank you all.
Commissioner, we appreciate that you fought to get this thing done. This was a lot of years and a lot of work, and you never dropped it, and you kept pushing for it. And you're right. Now, there's a connecting link to the history of Sedgwick County that will be for the future of Sedgwick County too. And you willed this thing to existence, and it's a wonderful legacy that you've left this county. So, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, your leadership was also needs to be noted here. You had a vision for this from the very beginning, and I think had you not intervened and shared your vision, this probably would have been wasted. So, I want to give you credit as well. I think you mentioned a number of people that did really good things, and it's a long process, but I want to say thank you to you specifically. As I think about where this tree has been for 50 years or longer, 60, who knows? In fact, I was told it was possible that the courthouse was kind of built around this tree. The tree may have been there before the courthouse. So, thinking about, you know, the government footprint of Sedgwick County and the proximity of that tree to the things that have happened here in Sedgwick County during that entire period of time. And then I think about the future of this table. I think for generations to come, the commission will make decisions around this table. And so, future budgets and future services, this table essentially is a symbol, I think, of Sedgwick County government. So, I just think it's nice that it wasn't lost, it wasn't missed, but it was carefully thought up, and you ushered that to fruition. So, thank you personally. I got to see this from, I remember when the tree was still up and people complained about the birds messing up the cars and all of that. And I thought, if we cut that down, we're going to get beat up over destroying this beautiful tree. But it turned out to be a really neat end to the story. So, thank you for your leadership and for what you did.
Thank you, Commissioner. Quite a legacy, sir. Thank you so much.
I think that's quite enough for today, sir. I'll stand for any questions.
That's very good. Great, good news, and let's keep sharing good news. There's always time for that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Nicole, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Agenda.
Okay, no one signed up for Public Agenda today, so we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of May 7, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, if you look at Items A and B, all Commissioners were present for both of these meetings, so I'll make a motion to combine both of those items. Any questions or comments on Items A or B? Okay, seeing done, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 7 and May 14, 2025. Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item C, Proclamation Declaring Garden Plain Can Brothers' Day.
Okay, we've asked Commissioner Howe, the only veteran that serves on this board, we've asked him to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, we only have one proclamation today, so I was wondering if Jim and Jean Sher are here already. Would you be willing to come to the podium while I read this, please? I want you to get a lot of recognition for this today because this is a really neat story. I'd like to also say that David Dennis has been a champion for veterans ever since I've known him. In fact, he's gotten more deeply involved in veterans' actions since he's retired from the commission here. But thank you for, again, for your service, David, as well. And you two, man, I wanted to have you up here because as I read this, I just want to see your faces and think about what amazing story this is. So, Mr. Chairman, let me read this today. It says, whereas Kansas Honor Flight is an all-volunteer organization that works to honor Kansas veterans of World War II, Korea War, and Vietnam War by providing them with an all-expense-paid journey of honor and remembrance to visit their memorials in Washington, DC. And whereas, since 2012, 4,100 Kansas veterans have been on this trip of a lifetime, providing gratitude, closure, and a proper welcome home. Trips are free to the veteran, completely funded by donations from grateful public. The current cost to send each veteran is $900. And whereas, Jim and, I'm sorry, whereas Jim Sher is a Korean War veteran who enlisted in the United States Army in 1954 at age 18. His younger brother, Jean Sher, is a Vietnam War veteran who enlisted in the United States Army in 1968, also at age 18. Whereas, upon return from their Kansas Honor Flight trips, Jim and Jean began paying it forward by collecting and recycling aluminum cans so other veterans could experience a Kansas Honor Flight trip. Since 2018, the Garden Plain Can Brothers have collected 1.3 million cans that have funded 30 veterans on Kansas Honor Flight trips. And whereas, the Garden Plain Can Brothers have established collection sites throughout western Sedgwick County, including Garden Plain, Colwich, Andale, Kingman, Cheney, Cheney Lake, Goddard, and Mays. They use their own vehicles, trailers, and fuel to haul all the recycling. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, they declare today, June 4, 2025, as Garden Plain Can Brothers' Day. And we ask all citizens to join us in appreciation of brothers Jim and Jean Sher for their service to our country and their continued service in Sedgwick County. I want to say thank you guys so much. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt this tremendous proclamation today.
And I'll proudly second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And again, I want to give this to you guys through Nicole, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. What a wonderful thing you guys have chosen to do. I love the Honor Flight team for what you guys provide our veterans, but for someone to do this personally the way you have is extraordinary. So, thank you for, both of you, for your continued service to our country and to other people who have served our country. God bless you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate this very much. It's something we've been kind of after, ever since, he went in 2017, and he found out that Pat's son loved to crush cans, Chris. So, he started collecting them and taking them in there. Well, it started getting more and more, so Chris couldn't keep up. So, he kept doing it more, and he was running, he'd lay them out on his driveway at home and run over them with his Ranger and smash them. And then I went in 2021, and I said, well, heck, I'll start helping you. So, we went on, and we got, like I said, we kept getting a little more here and a little more there. And it's kind of gotten almost a full-time job now, but we're still at it, and we've, we've, he took over it for me. I was getting too old. He still runs the cans down, but I do most of the hauling.
Yeah. They don't even want me driving in Wichita, so.
I'm sorry I don't know either one of you. Which one of you is Jean, and which one of you is Jim?
I'm Jean.
Nice to meet you, Jean. And Jim, thank you.
Yeah, I'm 89 now, so I'm time to think about retiring.
You deserve that, but I am so grateful that you're still at it and you're still serving other people. It's really a noble cause. Thank you for what you've done.
Very good. Yes. Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you guys for what you've done. I followed your story for quite a while. I remember back in 2013 when Herb Duncan first came to my district advisory board, was telling us about this idea with the Honor Flights. And then I remember when you guys had the idea and built up the momentum. So, thank you, thank you guys all for what you've done for Honor Flights and our veterans. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And you've earned, you have earned retirement, but we're grateful. You continue to serve this country and this community, so we're grateful for you. If it's okay with you, we'd love to get, just take about a five-minute timeout, and we'd love to go out the front and get a picture to honor this proclamation and to honor you and to share your story to the county. So, if you'll give us about a five-minute break, we'll pop out, we'll get pictures, and we'll come right back and get back to business, okay? Again. We got a quorum, so we'll get started. I want to also note what just took place out there. All metal recycling just donated $1,800 to Kansas Honor Flight and gave a little presentation out there to send two veterans on Honor Flight. So I want to honor them too. That was really cool. Okay, let's keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item D, Accept the Resignation of Susan Lentz from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is to accept the resignation of Susan Lentz from this advisory board. Recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Yeah, very good. Susan was my appointment to this board. She, it's just an issue of busyness of life. She served nobly on that board and with honor, and I appreciate her, I appreciate her service and sorry to see her go, but appreciate all that she did for us. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Lentz from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, Resolution Appointing Andy Armstrong to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Proposed to take up Items E through H together. These are all, all of these involve resolutions to appoint, reappoint, or in one case nominate for appointment individuals to various advisory boards. The recommended action is to adopt the resolutions on each of those items.
Okay, Commissioners, any objection to combining Items E, F, G, and H? Okay, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions in Items E, F, G, and H. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And if you are here today, our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, is here. Would love to swear you in, and we'd love to hear some comments. So you make your way right down over here, and he'll take care of you.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board to help me guide you. Congratulations. Like the statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, everybody. This is an honor for me, and I hope to bring a lot of knowledge and education to Cedric County individuals in terms of equine care. We're 20 years this year of Hope in the Valley Equine Rescue and Sanctuary. This is our 20-year anniversary coming up in a couple of weeks, so we want to invite everybody to come out. Come visit us, come see us. And we're here to help all the residents in Cedric County and the surrounding counties. So I am really grateful for the opportunity.
Well, Andy, I'm grateful you're willing to serve on this board as a nominee for me. I, Hope in the Valley Equine Rescue and Sanctuary is something that in our district everyone knows about, and in my house everyone knows about because my daughter obviously loves horses, and we have several horses. So we'll be out, hang out, and see you. And we've got a lot of mutual friends, and I'm grateful for your willingness to serve on this board.
Thank you for asking me. Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else here to be sworn in? Okay.
Sorry, I'm in the way.
Switch you out for a second. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board to help me guide. Yes, congratulations.
Jim, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I have had a real good time on this board, and it's certainly very educational for myself. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your service to the county. I never have got a chance to talk with you very much, but I want to say thank you since I have this opportunity. Appreciate your service to the county.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Kelly, thanks for being here. Appreciate everybody willing to serve on these boards. Okay, on to new business. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business, Item I, Consideration of Approval for an Interlocal Agreement with the City of Ketchikan Unified School District 262 and Unified School District 259 for Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Okay, hello, Anissa. Good to see you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Anissa Redd with the Division of Finance. And today I'm here to discuss the Ketchikan Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Also today, we have Matt Ginsby, the City of Ketchikan's administrator, here. And he has indicated that he's happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, state statute authorizes municipalities to establish a program for neighborhood revitalization and further allows for the use of interlocal agreements between municipalities. Historically, regarding the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, there have been five cities within Cedric County that have participated in this program. Currently, there are no active programs going on. As stated in the original plan, the Ketchikan Neighborhood Revitalization Plan is Ketchikan's plan's strategic effort to breathe new life within its community. It's designed to stimulate development, improve quality of life, and address aging infrastructure and dilapidated properties. The core of the plan is to offer property tax rebates as an incentive. This encourages owners to rehabilitate existing structures, undertake new construction, and remove abandoned properties. Ultimately, the goal is to protect public health, safety, and economic welfare within the four designated areas as seen on the screen. The plan focuses on improvements within these designated areas, including rehabilitations, alterations, additions, and construction. To qualify, construction must begin after the application date. Improvements must increase the property value by at least 15% or $15,000, and all work must comply with city codes. For residential incentives, these projects will receive a 100% tax rebate for five years. In the residential graph, the light blue, the light blue portion illustrates the amount being rebated to the resident, while the dark blue portion of the amount shows the portion the county would receive both during and after the program has ended. For commercial and industrial incentives, these projects will receive a 100% tax rebate in the first year, which then decreases by 10% each year, down to 10% in year 10. In the commercial graph, the dark blue portion represents the amount the resident would receive as a rebate, demonstrating the 10% decrease each year. The light blue portion conversely shows an increasing amount the county receives as the rebate diminishes. Rebates are based on the increase of the appraised value of the building due to improvements and not the overall market value of the property, meaning the incremental value would not change. This chart illustrates a fiscal impact of the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan on the county using a minimum investment residential deal as an example, over five years. While there are many numbers on the screen, the key takeaway here is to show a projected growth and benefit of the program even before its completion. Here's a breakdown of the columns. For total tax, the total amount of taxes a resident would pay. For state, county, city, and USC 259 are the various taxing authorities that levy taxes. The first highlighted column, the county, shows the direct allocation of tax dollars the county would receive, ranging from approximately $49.51 to $63.19. These amounts increase each year due to a 5% inflation rate, reflecting historical trends. Amount rebated, this is a hypothetical amount rebated to the resident primarily coming from the county, city, and school districts. For a majority of these scenarios, a substantial $166.12 is rebated, representing revenue foregone by these entities. Admin fee, the amount the county receives for administrative oversight, incremental tax to the county, additional tax revenue received by the county compared to the current year. Excuse me. And then total revenue to the county. The final column shows the net revenue to the county the county would receive after all allocations, including the impact of the rebate. If you notice how on the last row, when the $166.12 rebate is no longer present, the total revenue to the county significantly increases to $63.19. And this highlights a clear trade-off, increased, and the increased benefit to the county once the rebate program is completed. This illustration demonstrates that the county will receive, will see benefits from the program, programs grow throughout the five-year duration, just, not just at the end. And another fiscal impact for a commercial, this chart represents a detailed financial breakdown. But the main takeaway is to illustrate the projected growth and increasing revenue for the county from a minimum commercial deal over a 10-year period as the associated rebate gradually decreases each year. Specifically observed the amount rebated column, this initial rebate is strategically designed to decrease annually, gradually phasing out over time. This diminishing rebate directly leads to growth seen in the total revenue column, which represents the net revenue the county receives as the rebate lessens. The county's revenue from this commercial project steadily increases, demonstrating a long-term financial benefit of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. How the program works. Owners will submit a written application and a $25 fee to the City of Ketchikan. After preliminary approval, the Cedric County Appraiser's Office conducts an inspection. Once the construction is complete, owners will file a Part II of the application by November 1st. The city then inspects a property, inspects a property for completion and code compliance. Finally, the completed application comes back to Cedric County Appraiser's Office for the final valuation that determines the rebate. The Cedric County Clerk then will calculate the rebate, and the Cedric County Treasurer will verify if the taxes have been paid. New applications will be accepted into the program until December 31st of 2029, with construction needing to be completed by this date, though a six-month extension. construction needing to be completed by this date, though a six-month extension may be granted by the city. The City of Kechai is requesting an interlocal agreement with Cedric County USD 259 and USD 262. The city would like Cedric County to administer this plan on behalf of all parties, and in return of our administrative efforts, the county will collect a 5% of the rebated tax amount to cover these costs. This plan represents a significant step for the City of Kechai. Without creating a fiscal burden on Cedric County, we would only be foregoing the taxes that we currently do not receive from these improvements. We recommend approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Kechai, USD 259, USD 262, and Cedric County, and authorize all necessary signatures. This agreement allows us to support the City of Kechai's economic development and quality of life initiatives, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anissa. We do have a few questions, and I know Matt Jinsby is also here, so if this question that you think would be better answered from Matt, or if he has any comments as well, he is standing right there, and we'll fire away. So Commissioner Blueball.
Thank you very much. You know, this is something I had tried to work from the City of Wichita for several years, and was there a moratorium or anything on these, or have these been open the whole time, like the last decade?
No moratorium that I know of.
Yeah, currently, no moratorium. They just phase out over time.
Okay, okay. Do you have agreement with the city and the school district?
Yes, so 259 has accepted the agreement. We're still talking with 262. I just received some information back from them. The Valley Center School District, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but we're still in talks with them.
Okay. Because, you know, I've had this at every level, from the school board, you know, we talked about it then, and I know sometimes school boards onboard the city, just mostly interested, and do you feel it's likely that the school's going to go along with it, or...
I don't have any indication that they're not.
Okay.
No. I've talked to the superintendent, we haven't had deep talks about it, but I don't have any indication that it will not.
Okay, I mean, this is a program that I've wanted to see spurred up in our area, so I don't know if anyone else in Cedric County is taking this on, but I applaud you guys for stepping forward.
Thank you. Kechai, as you know, has not seen a lot of growth in about the last 10 years, and we have two cities on both sides of us that are very progressive, specifically Park City and Bel Air, and this is kind of our start to kickstart some of our local economy within our city, specifically in our core area of town, where people want to see growth in kind of our arts and business district in there. And one of the nice things about this program, that it's a question that has came up, that we're rebating people's taxes. Well, we are rebating a portion of the assessed valuation, but the important thing to remember is we are not giving up anything that we don't already have.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was going to get. Basically, you're saying it's no burden on Cedric County, meaning it's net new.
Correct.
So, the increment.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
We'll keep getting some questions. Doesn't appear, Kechai borders District 1 and District 4, so we work together a lot, Matt. It doesn't appear there's a big fiscal impact on the county, but I am curious, Anissa, maybe you can help me with it. Why is the county administering a city program that's a city, that's Kansas statute, so it's a Kansas statute-approved program, but it's for a city? So can you help maybe explain to the public why the county would be administering a city program?
Yeah, absolutely. The administration of the program will primarily reside with the county. This approach is more efficient as the county possesses the established capabilities for conducting property valuations and accurately calculating mill levies.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. A few more questions. Matt, is this just for blighted property? Or, Anissa, maybe you can help me with this, is this just for blighted areas only, or is there other uses that you're wanting to do?
It includes revitalization of properties, and it includes new construction also.
Okay.
And that's one thing we, as a city, really want to target. A lot of these smaller developments that we have are not eligible for IRBs, such as in our industrial park, so we want to provide an incentive for smaller businesses to develop in our core, the core of our town, so that's what this is primarily.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
All right, a few more questions. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who's the right person to ask these questions to, so let me just, I guess we'll go through and see what happens here, but how many, I said, you mentioned that Kechai has not had a lot of growth in the past. Any idea as to why that is?
I don't know. I'm fairly new in Kechai. I've been there about a year and a half, and that was one of the things that the council wanted me to do, was help stimulate some of that growth in the county.
Okay.
I don't have a good answer for you. I don't know if it hasn't been sought, or they just haven't promoted it, but we know as a city that if we don't grow, we die.
Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name earlier. What's your last name?
Jinsby.
Jinsby?
Yes.
Okay, that may be hard for me to remember. I hope I remember that. So it is your intention that there be a lot of new construction hopefully under this program?
Yes.
And we're talking homes about what price point, over $250,000, $350,000?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. There's a small development, a developer who's looking at this. Well, there's two. There's one in the Sunnydale area. I don't know the price points on his homes. It's a very unique type community he's wanting to develop, pocket-type neighborhoods that really focus on community, and I would imagine those would be a little higher price point of homes. The homes in kind of the core of our city would, I would imagine those would start around $200,000. They would probably be more patio-type homes is the concepts that we've seen.
If they're $350,000, again, a lot of the new construction in some of these cities is in that price point, let me just throw out there, I guess, an average number of taxes in the year might be around $5,000, $5,000, depends on which community you live in, let's just round it off to $5,000, so over five years, they would receive about a $25,000 incentive to do that. Is that about right?
So what's your figure?
And that's on a new construction, sir?
Yeah. If you build a new home, $350,000 home?
For a new construction, they would receive 50% of the tax rebate instead of 100% on a rehab.
Okay, okay.
In fact, that bar chart that you showed, I have some questions on that bar chart. Would you mind going back? So, on the residential side, you said that the light blue is what? That's the...
That's the amount that the resident would receive at 95...
As a rebate?
Yes, as a rebate.
Okay, and that's for new construction only?
No, this is for the rehabilitation on properties.
So all residential, whether it's rehab or new, it's 50%?
On, for residential, on a rehab, it would be 100% for five years, and then 50% for new construction.
Correct. Okay, so that residential chart is really for new construction only?
No, it's for rehabilitation on an existing home.
I think I'm going in circles. I apologize.
Yes.
Yeah, rehabilitation would be 100% for five years, and new construction would be 50%.
See, that chart shows like a 50% is blue, a light blue, and 50% is dark blue for five years, so that would indicate that's a new construction chart. It's not a rehabilitation chart. That chart's only for new construction then?
This, what you're, yes.
As displayed on that...
Reflect new construction would be the 50%.
Okay, okay. All right, so do you, any idea how many homes have been built in Kechai in the last year or two, three? Do you have any data about how many homes are being built?
We have had one building permit.
Okay, all right, so fiscal note, do you have areas that are being developed, that are planning to be developed, that are waiting for this program to happen?
We do, specifically in the Sunnydale area with that pocket housing community, and then in the core of our town, we have a developer who is kind of waiting on this. It's not a deal breaker, but he would like to take advantage of it for both residential and some commercial front.
How many housing units are potentially going to happen in those areas that you're talking about?
The one I know, 17.
17 housing units?
Yes.
Okay. If this is not approved, do you believe those construction projects will continue to move forward? I mean, talking about a $10,000, $12,000, $15,000 benefit for someone over five years on a $350,000 home, let's just say, I don't know that that would necessarily be, you know, a reason for someone to build or not build, or someone to buy or not buy one of those homes, based on those numbers I just gave you.
Sure. I can't speak for the developers on those. I know one of the developers that we have, who is building a strip center in the heart of our city, he wishes to utilize this to offset some of the initial rent, to bring that rent down for his tenants, to help them with their startup costs.
Okay, this may be for someone else, but someone you mentioned earlier, there were five cities total. Is this, would this be, this would be the sixth city?
Yes, this would be the sixth city.
So the other five cities that have got this in, you mentioned that this expired, what did you, what was the word you used? This program expires?
Phased out, so for residential, it's five years, and then for commercial, 10 years with the decreasing amount.
So those cities that had this approved in the past, the program is no longer out, you said it was active, but then you also said that the program expires. So again, on an individual basis, each home has a five-year opportunity. I get that. But what I'm wondering is, are these programs active? If someone wanted to make an application, one of those five cities right now, they could or could not do that?
I, sure.
Having been around a little longer than Anissa, I can remember back to the early 2000s, when we were doing these programs before, but Clearwater and some in the City of Wichita, different communities had these programs. They are set for a specified period of time, as this one would be, to accept applications. I think this one goes up to 2029, and then rebates can extend after applications have ceased. The other programs are all, they've just gone through their lifecycle, so they could come back with another program if they wanted to, but none are active today.
I guess I have some concerns about this. I'll just say this, the briefing I received on this before, I don't think I was completely satisfied that it had all my questions answered, and I still have some concerns. Is there some timeline pressure to do this today necessarily, or is this something that we can chew on for a bit and maybe, I'm just asking if this is anything urgent, that this needs to be approved on a certain date or timeline that we're looking towards?
No, I would say the sooner the better, just because we have those developers who are kind of waiting on this for the approval to move forward on some things, but it's something we can talk about, yeah.
I'll say this...
Questions today.
Okay, I'll say this, I don't blame anybody for using every tool in the toolbox, and this is a tool the state's created, and it has to be approved by the governing bodies, it sounds like. And so I don't blame anybody for using whatever tools happen to be, you know, offered to them, and to make their situation as good for them as possible. The greatest amount of housing for the least cost for the developer and to the ultimate owner of the property. So I don't mind that at all. One of my goals as a commissioner here is to have as broad a base of taxpayers and the lowest rates possible. Lowest rates, broader space, that's the way I'd like to push things. And to use tax incentives for housing, which I don't, I don't know that I agree that there's a but for here, and when I say the word but for, what I'm saying is, I think these areas will develop regardless of this, whether it's approved or not. I am concerned that the schools are providing educational opportunities for the students that are going to come out of these homes, but the people who are in these homes are not technically paying for the education, as every other homeowner in Kechai and across Cedric County is, in fact, paying for that. Even if they rent, they're still paying that property tax through their rent. And again, so we're essentially creating a carve-out for someone to get a gift, if you will, on the backs of every other taxpayer. So I just philosophically don't know that I agree with using taxpayer incentives to create housing. I just think fundamentally, to me, it violates the principles of broad-based, low rates, and everybody should pay for the services of government that they receive. So philosophically, I don't know that I really like this program, and I don't know that I think that the but for is real. I think that Kechai should grow. I've been through Kechai, it's a beautiful city, and I would love to live in Kechai someday. I think it's a great place to live, and I think that if there's a place to build homes there, there are building homes all around Cedric County, especially in some of these smaller cities. That's the place that people want to live. They want to access Wichita for the economic opportunities of Wichita, but living in a smaller city just outside of City of Wichita is a prime place to build homes. And again, I don't mind, I'm not surprised people would be waiting for this to be decided because, should this be approved, it actually improves their opportunities to get a greater building or a larger home or whatever for least, less cost, and so I don't, I'm not surprised they're waiting, but I don't know that this necessarily would change whether this happens or not. I think we see in other places that regardless of incentives, people still build homes, people still need to buy homes. In fact, there's a housing shortage in Cedric County, I'm sure you know. Some people say 50,000 units short right now. Sounds crazy to me that that's the number, but that's, you know, so again, if you build a home, people will buy it. In fact, I know if a home goes for sale, if it's priced reasonably, it's almost a bidding war, even right now. So developers know, if they build it and it's in the price point that people are fighting each other for those properties, this incentive is not really necessary. In the meantime, we are essentially giving someone a gift. I'm not sure that the homeowner will necessarily see that, because ultimately, that developer may actually take the, this is going to benefit potentially the owner or the developer, it's not clear which one benefits. So I don't know for sure that this is actually going to be something that causes housing to happen, that we're making it less expensive for the ultimate buyer of these properties. I don't know that that's true, but there is someone going to benefit from this, and it may be the developer. So I would just say, if the developer's out there and they're not building homes, if they can build homes, they're building homes now, because every home that's being built right now is being sold. So I don't know that there's a but for here. That's a long, that's a lot of discussion here. I probably won't support this today. I would be okay with pushing this off for a little while for more discussion and more thought. I would say that the school districts have never, that I've been here 10 years, the school districts have never voted against any tax program, any type of economic development tool that's been offered, and it impacts their bottom line. They've never voted no, so I'm not surprised either one of these districts would even weigh in. In fact, I wouldn't go to assume, Brent, that they don't even have to vote. If they don't vote, my guess is it's automatically approved.
It works a little bit like TIF, but the process for approval is a little different. This requires an interlocal agreement that each tax authority would have to sign, and if I go way back in history, we did have one school district that quit participating in one of these once upon a time.
And to be clear, is this, in this incentive, is it possible for one governing body to be different than the other governing bodies and do it differently? So if we don't want to participate, Kechai and the school districts can still participate if they want to.
Right, and we will still be required to administer the program.
Okay, that's okay. That doesn't bother me too much. I just think that, you know, on the financial side of this, I'm more aligned, I'm more wanting to support broad-based and low rates, and to me, this goes against that, and so I think I've said plenty. I don't think I need to say anything else. I would probably not support this today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Blueball.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I completely understand what Commissioner House is talking about, because that was, you know, I've tried to work these issues from the City of Wichita side, and it was always, well, you don't know if the school district's going to go along, and I wish we knew that for sure, but, you know, we wrestled with so much, and again, most of my experience with the City of Wichita, the land bank, just, you know, the people with places, I look at areas, and not to disblight, but it's not growing. You've only got one build permit, and you're going to have the infrastructure, you're going to have to keep your streets up, you're going to have to keep all the city stuff up, and you hate to see an area deteriorate to where you're going to have to come in there and do that, and possibly special assess an area for improvements that the value's not growing. So I'm definitely, you know, I wouldn't want to do this for any area, but if it's an area where you're only pulling one building permit, I think we have to kind of use a common sense approach to it.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little context, because this is part of my district. This is a state program. I have said from the second I got on the bench that I want to empower cities. I want to empower you and stay in our lane. I'm looking at the financial impact to the county, not, the school district can make their own decisions, they have an elected body. I don't run the school districts, I'm not voted to represent the school districts, I'm representing the county in this, in my district, which you're a part of. We have a housing shortage. I do think we need to be aggressive within measure based on financial impact. This is not a significant financial impact to the county. It's not. It's simply not. If Mays was here asking for this, with 18 different housing projects going on in Mays, I'd be less likely to support. If Goddard, no offense to Commissioner Wise in District 3, if Goddard was here asking, and Goddard has opportunities, and this commission has voted down an RHID for Goddard because we didn't think the but for was necessary. This is part of my district, the but for, I do think is necessary, because I think you have a lot of work to do to keep up with your neighbors in Bel Air, in Valley Center, and Park City. And I appreciate that this is a state program, that you're doing the best you can to represent your district and grow the tax base and grow the population and the economy in Kechai. So I do have some strong feelings about TIF districts and things of that sort. You don't see a lot of that come before the county commission, but the first principle, in my view, is supporting the cities and trying to empower... in my view, is supporting the cities and trying to empower their growth, because you're held accountable to your voters as well, that your city council and your mayor are. So I'm going to be supportive of it, because I don't see a significant financial impact, and I want to make sure we're empowering the things in your strategic plan that you're doing to support your growth. Commissioner Wise?
My question is more of just a technical question. Are there any guardrails on the application approval process to where you're not just trading someone who's currently paying property taxes as normal to buy a new home in the same city that they already live in, or to build or trade property and receive this tax benefit? Or is that a stipulation of this application, that it is generating a new person or family to come to your city?
Yeah, with the application process, I don't know that there's any guardrails to keep, and the way I understand your question, is somebody who currently lives in the city building another home to take advantage of this. I don't, I've never heard that. Not that it couldn't happen, but through the application process, we as the city screen those people. To answer your question, it wouldn't prohibit it. I don't know how much advantage it would be to them to do that.
Have we seen that in some of the previous cities that have ran this program?
I don't know that we've ever seen restrictions on people doing things within, that's already in the city, doing something else in the city. One thing I would remind you of with this particular program is that it's, there's two different ways to get a rebate for residential structures, and that you can also stimulate commercial growth. With any one of those, we would participate in that valuation growth, or the declining amount of the rebate over the life of the, that the rebates are being paid. So it's, you know, if somebody comes and builds a new home, only 50% of the tax is paid to the city, the county, and part of the school district taxes are being rebated. So we're getting half of what we would have gotten anyway for that five-year period. With commercial, it's on that sliding scale from 190, 80, 70. So we're going to see fiscal impact that's positive to the county regardless of which of these benefits someone might take advantage of. So if that helps with that fiscal analysis, I'd submit that.
Okay. I would note that Commissioner Meister had to step out, he had an urgent situation he had to deal with, but he'll be joining us back. But, and this is a big part, Kechai's a big part of District 1. So I feel comfortable, I appreciate Commissioner House's comments, I think that we've got enough consensus to go ahead and move this thing forward, and that way, we're not making Kechai wait any longer for our decision-making. But with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract and authorize signatures. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please cover all.
Commissioner Bluebuck?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
No.
Commissioner Meister?
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Matt, thank you. Anissa, thanks for all the work you did on this, you did a really good job, I appreciate it. Brent, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
May I log some notes here? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, CON 2025-00045, conditional use request in the county to allow vehicle storage yard on property zoned R.R. rural residential district located on the southeast corner of West Ray Street and South Sterns Avenue.
Okay, there's Scott Whedon.
Hello, good morning. All right. So as you heard, the applicant for this case is requesting a conditional use in order to allow for vehicle storage yard on the site. This item is being heard today because recommendations from the City of Hayesville Planning Commission and the Wichita-Sedgwick County Planning Commission are different. In terms of the request, in January 2025, the applicant received a notice of violation for having semi trucks stored on the property without the proper zoning. The applicant is requesting the conditional use in order to allow for vehicle storage yard so they can store seven semi trucks on the site. During the MAPC meeting, the agent for the applicant indicated that they are in the process of trying to find a different property where they can store the vehicles in conformance with requirements. The Unified Zoning Code defines vehicle storage yard as the keeping outside of a building for more than 72 consecutive hours of one or more motor vehicles, and this does not include inoperable vehicles, that's a different definition, of vehicles, including boats, trailers, or unoccupied recreational vehicles. If the vehicles were parked for less than 72 hours, then it would be classified as commercial parking, which is not allowed in rural residential zoning. So there's a lot of nuances with this. In addition, the Unified Zoning Code allows for rural home occupation uses, which allow the property owner to store one commercial vehicle that exceeds 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight if it is owned by the property owner. So they don't qualify for that, again, because of the seven vehicles. The vehicle storage yard is subject, would be subject to a number of supplementary use regulations, which are listed in the staff report. So in terms of the property, the site is generally located to the south and east of the intersection of 87th Street South and South Meridian Avenue. It consists of one ownership parcel, is approximately 4.8 acres in size, zoned rural residential and currently developed with a house and two garages, which you can see on the aerial. Now, a quick note about this, one is that you'll notice the aerial map seems to indicate that the northmost garage is located over the property line and onto the neighboring property to the north. The neighbor to the north was at the MAPC meeting and indicated that the aerial map is incorrect and that the garage is not on their property. So regardless of, if there's any approvals today, the, all of the vehicles will have to be on the applicant's property. We've also submitted this to GIS so that they're aware of this boundary issue, so they're looking into it. In terms of context, properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned rural residential in unincorporated Sedgwick County and developed with single-family dwellings on large lots. I'll try and get, so here's the zoning, you can see the green color, which is rural residential. The staff report, the staff report provides additional information about use definitions and supplementary use regulations. On March 27th, the Hayesville Planning Commission considered the conditional use request and recommended denial of the application, and that vote was 7-0. One member of the public spoke in opposition to the request due to wear and tear on unpaved roads. On April 10th, the MAPC held a public hearing and considered the application. They recommended approval of vehicle storage yard, that vote was 12 to 1. Subject to the conditions identified in the staff report, these include that the vehicle storage yard shall be limited to the storage of seven commercial vehicles, and that the conditional use would be permitted for one year, that after that, the property owner can apply to renew the conditional use for a one single-year period, subject to administrative approval by the planning department. At that hearing, again, the neighbor to the north was there, and they spoke in support of the request, claiming they do, the neighbor does not make noise throughout the day and are courteous. In addition, a representative of the Hayesville Planning Commission was in attendance at the MAPC meeting and shared reasons for the planning commission's, that planning commission's recommendation of denial. Those are identified in the staff report. In response to a question, the individual also indicated that they thought the proposed and later approved recommendation of the MAPC was appropriate. The District 2 Citizen Advisory Board did not hear the case, and no protests were received for this application. Due to the denial of, due to the denial recommendation from the Hayesville Planning Commission, the conditional use request must be approved, if it is to be approved, must be approved by a supermajority of four out of five votes. So the recommended action, the recommended action coming to you from the MAPC is for the county commission to adopt the findings of the planning commission, the MAPC, approve the conditional use request, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published. And again, that is with the conditions that are specified in the staff report.
Very good, okay.
So alternatives include the following, you can override the MAPC adopt alternative findings and deny the application. That would require two-thirds majority, so four out of five. Or, as always, you can return it to the MAPC for further consideration. Again, would recommend that you make a statement specifying why you would be returning it, and that would require three out of five. So with that, I'll take you through some of the images and graphics. So here's the aerial image that we talked about, here's the zoning map, again, rural residential surrounding the property. Here's the map of the urban growth area from the comprehensive plan, showing that it's in Hayesville's urban growth area, that's why it went to their planning commission. Also in their zoning area of influence, or urban area of influence for zoning. Here's the notification area, as well as the protest map, again, no protests were submitted on this case. And here are photos of the site, and then the surrounding area. Just kind of cruise through those pretty quick. Okay. I'd also note that the agent for the applicant is here today. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott. Nice piece of property, appreciate the opportunity to be briefed on this. Before we move forward, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to declare any ex parte communication that's taken place with the commission. So if we can just go down the line, Commissioner Bluebuck?
I have not.
Okay.
I have had no ex parte communication.
Okay. I have also had zero ex parte communication, and I remain open-minded on the facts of the case.
I have not had any ex parte communication.
I've also had none.
Okay. Any questions before we open up, here from the applicant's agent and open up a public hearing? I do have one question, Scott, on timing of this.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity for the commission, the Hayesville Planning Commission recommended denial, 7-0.
Correct.
And I'm reading through some of the things as to why they, why the planning commission's recommendation was denial. Did the conditions that were from MAPC, primarily that one-year conditional use, did that come after, did that come because of the Hayesville Planning Commission vote?
It came, I would say, maybe in part, because the MAPC was aware of the recommendation from Hayesville, but I think it really came from the deliberation at MAPC that the applicant's agent expressed that the applicant was actively looking for another property, and I think that the MAPC was sympathetic to that, and said, hey, how can we limit this in the amount of time to not let them run on with this use, but give them time to find it.
So I want to be clear, the condition says that this conditional use will just be for one year.
That's correct.
While the applicant is looking for a new property. That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Scott?
And subject to one, one-year extension.
Subject to one, one-year extension, that's good. I hear the lawyer out there. Okay, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of clarifications. So that one-year extension, they would make the application to?
It would come to? To the planning department, and that would be considered administratively, so it could be approved by staff.
And what are the criteria whereby you would say approve or deny? What are you looking at specifically to decide that?
Personally, I would look to see whether or not it's controversial. So I would expect that we would go through our typical process of having them place a sign on the property for disclosure to the neighbors, and then we would see if we received any advert, any comments in opposition or concerns about it.
Do we need to make that a condition, because that would not normally happen unless we make it so? Am I right about that?
It typically does when we do administrative approvals, so.
See, typically, so again, then?
If you want more certainty, absolutely, you can put that in there, but.
And again, let me just be clear, up to right now, was this, for this conditional use today, was this already signed and notifications went out?
It's not signed in this case. We'll talk, actually, we've got another item on the agenda about that, but for county cases, we do not require, it's not required to have a sign posted.
But you said for the extension, you would?
Yes, sir.
So it seems odd to me that on the initial, initial consideration and potential approval, there's been no sign required and no sign provided, but on the application, the extension for one year, that would be a higher level of community notification than what this has already received at this point?
Yes, sir. We typically do that for the administrative ones because that is the only form of notification that we do.
Okay, and today, as this is coming to us, I mean, if this is approved, is it, is today's date the beginning of the one-year process?
The approval date of the B O C C, yes, sir.
And then, then as they get to approach that one-year expiration of this, they would need to start the process of notification and reconsideration before that, by enough time to make sure that this is?
If they're still there, yes, that would be the hope.
Okay. I have other more questions, but I'll wait for a little bit and see who else speaks. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, hang tight. I'd like to give an opportunity for the applicant or applicant's agent to come and present. If you could just do us a favor and give your name and address for the record, our friendly county clerk here will give you five minutes, and then if you could stand for questions. Hello, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Janet Bates with Platinum Realty, representing Miguel Reyes, and my address, 1255 North Drury, Clearwater, Kansas, 67026. Miguel Reyes was just notified this year, and he actually just has five semis that he has in his business, and his business has grown since he's moved there. And he had built that garage, obviously, to help with his business. And in the meantime now, since he has been notified, we have identified a property in Hayesville Industrial Park. So we should be finalizing that this week, so he will begin the building of that area for his new, for his trucks to be in, being stored there. So I would guess within a year, he'll be completed and everything moved to his new location. So I would think the one-year with the one-year extension should be plenty of time.
Very good. Was it Janet?
Yes.
Okay, Janet, thank you for that. A couple of questions. Commissioner Bluebuck?
Morning, Janet, how are you?
Morning.
Good to see you. It's my understanding, he's got pretty friendly relations with the neighbors, doesn't he?
Yes.
I mean, I think the neighbor to the north is the one that kind of advocated for this, and really no neighborhood issues that we know of?
No, he keeps very clean area.
Okay.
Yeah, and the neighbor was very admirable about how well he keeps the area and how quiet they are.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And just for confirmation, there were no protests, is that correct? Zero protests in the application? Okay. Other questions for, other questions for Janet? Commissioner Howe, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to be clear, so you say he has five trucks, this is for seven trucks?
Yes, I'm not sure where she came up with that. She, she asked, and so when we responded, she just said she'd already filled it out with seven, so.
Okay.
She never corrected it.
Has this cost you any money to get to this point today? Is there?
Yeah, he's spent out about $1,500 so far.
To get to today, to today, okay. And I guess to be, to be clear, I guess this may be for staff again, but again, you did say notifications did go out, just so people were notified within a thousand feet radius?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you sound like you're pretty confident this will be done, taking care of it within the year?
I believe so, yeah. I see, it's already talking with Clary Buildings out of Wellington, and they have the design plan. And we've had the lot, we've been working with Hayesville, with their lot there in the industrial park off the Broadway.
Do you feel like that schedule's kind of dicey, that in one year, you're going to be kind of really close to cutting that?
It could be close with building construction and things like that, so.
Would you be open to the idea of making this something slightly longer than 12 months, but no extension?
I, I think he would appreciate that, yes.
I mean, if it was 14 months, but no extension option, would that be something you'd be interested in?
Um, yes, I think that would be more, well, I don't know, he might need an extension, you just never, you know, you never know with building, when you're relying on construction costs and being able to.
I guess the way I see this, this puts the pressure on to actually really get it done.
Right.
And again, if you say I've got 24 months, you may relax a bit more than maybe you would if you said only had 14 months, there's no way to extend it without spending another $1,500.
Right. I mean, he definitely doesn't want to have to, you know, go before and pay out any more funds, but I would think 14 to 18 months should be, because he's ready to get going. He's just been waiting for all the approvals.
Well, yeah, 18's a bit longer than 14, but anyway, I just, I just think that the one-year extension to me is not, is not ideal. I wish we had a set number of months, and it would incentivize you all to get this done. And how long has, how long has this been, this property been storing these trucks up till now?
Just a short time.
Okay.
Because he started in 2016 with just one truck, and he hauls rock and gravel for Cornejo. So his business has grown since.
It's nice to know that the neighbors are supportive, and, and I want to be pro-business. I want him to be successful.
Right.
Obviously, we have to do things the right way. So I do want to see this get solved, and I'm grateful that the neighbors don't seem to be, you know, quite, you know, they're not truly, if they were upset, you'd think we'd hear from them, but I do think that solving this sooner than later, it sounds like if you even entertain the idea of 18 months to 12 months is, is probably not going to happen then. So I guess I'm just curious what the, what the real schedule is to get this done.
We're almost to the last leg of approval, I believe, with the city of Hayesville. Kaylin could help us with that. On the other lot, we're, we did get approval, so I would think that we would be here within the next month or two, breaking ground for this building.
All right. Thanks for, thanks for my questions.
Okay, very good. Janet, why don't you hang tight real close? We want to give an opportunity for the public. If there's any public comment that would like to be shared, we'll open up a public hearing, and we are on item J. This is a conditional use request, so if anyone from the public would like to share, we'd invite you to the podium. Okay. Going once. Okay, looks like we'll close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the bench. Commissioner Bluebaugh, this is your district, so you're welcome to take the lead.
Thank you very much, and I guess the only thing that I'd ask for is we get an invitation to that ground, to the final ribbon-cutting after his new facility is done.
He would appreciate that.
I'd like to go ahead and take the recommended action to adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, approve the conditional use request for vehicle storage yard, sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published.
Okay. I'll second the motion, but I want to hang tight. Commissioner Howe has a question.
Let's see, Janet's still standing there, so I thought public hearing was going to be completed, so I have questions for staff. Sorry, Janet.
Okay.
When staff made the initial recommendation to deny?
Yes, sir.
Was it in the current form that we have today, or is there, were there changes made to this by?
It was in the current form that's captured in the MAPC minutes. So at the beginning of the MAPC minutes, you'll see the staff report that was provided to them.
Did that include the one-year extension at that time?
No, sir. That was?
What was, what was the status at that time? Just to be approved, and that was it forever?
At that time, it was a recommendation for denial. I'm going to look through it real quick and see if we have the?
I guess what I'm asking is, did the applicant have the intention that this is a, an expiring conditional use at that time? So when you made a recommendation to deny, that it was based on the idea this was going to stay this way forever?
No, sir. My recommenda, my recollection is that the one-year timeframe came up at the MAPC meeting.
And so before that, what was the status then? It was for one year or forever?
Samantha Keeng, Assistant County Counselor, at the MAPC hearing, M A P D staff reported that the request from the applicant at that time was for a 10-year conditional use permit, and that was the reason for the denial by the M A P D staff. And then during the presentation by the applicant, and she explained that they were in the process of getting a new place in the Hayesville City area, that they would be able to get this completed within a year or two. Then that's where the commission decided to consider and change the recommendation to, the recommended action, so that it would be just limited to one year with the potential for one-year renewal in case of construction delays.
Okay, so this, this idea was developed during the MAPC deliberations, if you will, of this case?
Yes, sir.
Did Hayesville Planning Commission and Hayesville City Council have the one-year extension information in front of them when they also recommended to deny?
At the MAPC hearing, Hayesville Planning Representative was present, and she was asked if she had, would agree with that, and she indicated yes.
I guess?
And she is here today in the audience.
May I restate my question? When the Planning Commission made a decision to recommend denial, and when the city council made a recommendation, I have a letter from the city council in my backup material from the city, says we recommend denial, signed by the mayor of the city of Hayesville, and the Planning Commission also is in here, says they recommended denial unanimously. When each of those two bodies made their recommendations, was the one-year extension and the one-year expiration something that had been thought of and was presented to them when they made the recommendations to deny, or was that something that came after those recommendations were formulated?
I, I cannot speak to what the Hayesville Council or the Hayesville Planning Commission were aware of. But at the Hayesville meeting, based on the minutes, it indicated that there was discussion that the agent had brought up that was indicating that they would, would seek a limited time, and that was discussed, but the, but the Planning Commission overruled it and did not want, and denied it.
Just for my own sake, can I ask the representative from Hayesville to come up and answer questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and your position for the record, please.
Kaylin Hogan, Planning and Zoning Administrator and Hayesville Planning Commission Secretary.
Can you clarify, when, when the city council and the Hayesville Planning Commission both made recommendations to deny, had they, were they aware of the expiring one-year agreement here with a one-year extension? Was that something they, they knew when they made the recommendations to deny, or did they not know that?
When the Planning Commission made a recommendation to deny, to deny, that was with the original staff report with the, I forget the 10 years, for the conditional use at 8900 South Sterns to be for 10 years. And so we recommended denial based on that. The letter you have from the mayor is after the MAPC meeting, where it was not clarified that the one-year approval would be for, sorry, that it would be approved for one year with a one-year and only one-year administrative approval afterwards. Our interpretation of that would, it would be one year with an unlimited amount of one-year renewals.
So?
The city council has not seen this conditional use.
That's my concern. So again, based on what I have right now, I don't have good information from the city. They want, they're asking us to deny, and so we actually had staff recommend deny, we had Planning Commission from Hayesville recommend deny, we had the city count, I'm sorry, yes, the city council recommended deny, then it, then it sounds like things changed. Staff hasn't reconsidered this, city council hasn't reconsidered this, and you, and you say that, again, the timeline of this means, I don't think, in all those three denials, it actually has been reconsidered based on the expiring conditional use with the one-year extension. So I don't really have good data, I guess is my problem here. Go ahead. I see staff wants to say something.
I could, yeah. I think I can add some clarification to this. So the staff letter, we sent out a letter after the MAPC meeting to let everyone know what happened at the MAPC meeting. As part of that letter and as part of the initial staff report that you would have received, we, the staff person typed it up that the one-year renewals would go on and on and on and on.
Okay.
We caught that during our review process for your staff report, and we, with the assistance of the council's office and other planning staff, we caught that, and we changed it to clarify that it was for one. So that would be the discrepancy between what Hayesville received, what they thought, what their interpretation was based on that letter, and what your staff report says.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for the clarification. I think that was my briefing when we, we read that and found that, that I thought was a conflict at the time, and so again, that seems, that's been cleaned up. So appreciate that. Thank you very much for your answer to my question. I would, I'll support the, the motion this morning, but I, I really wish we would have just done this differently. I wish, and I'm not going to make a substitute, but if I was going to make a substitute, I would, I would, number one, I would require signage and notification for the extension. If we're going to do, follow that route, I think even better than that, though, I would rather see this be like 15 months and no extension, because to me, that just solves the problem entirely. That way we're just, we're just one and done. But since there's been a motion made, it sounds like we're going to move on. I'll, I'll support the motion as is, but I, I think we could have done this a little bit better. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion. We have a second. Go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay. Scott, thanks. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, DER 2024-0001, Amendment to the July 9, 2009 Edition of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Zoning Code, adopted by the City of Wichita, ordinance number 48-431, and Sedgwick County Resolution Number 137-09, as amended, dealing with public notice development signs as provided in Article VB4 notices.
Okay, Scott, welcome back.
Hello. Thank you, Scott Waidell, again, from the Planning Department. So this item is to consider whether to adopt amendments to the Unified Zoning Code, and these changes deal with public notification signs. So here's the recommended actions, to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the proposed amendments, resolution, authorize signatures, et cetera. Here's, we'll go through some of the background information first. So the Planning Department provides public notices about upcoming zoning cases in a variety of formats, and you can see them listed here. One of those formats is using signs that are installed on the property. So here's an image of what the signs look like. Currently, there is an MAPC policy that requires signs for city zoning cases. It does not apply to county cases. So, and there's, talks about the duration, 13 days, $5 fee, and the enforcement is actually done by the Planning Commission currently. So in terms of signed instructions, the Planning Department has published instructions on where and how to install the signs, how many are needed. So in terms of the recommendations, again, the recommended action, what it would do is it would make amendments to the Unified Zoning Code. This would be similar to the current MAPC policy that's been in place for city cases for decades. This would apply to both city and county cases. It would require posting of a sign no less than 13 days prior to the MAPC public hearing, and it would require a signed and notarized affidavit by the applicant indicating the date and time that the sign is installed. Enforcement of signed installation is by the Planning Commission and the governing bodies, so both the city council and the county commission. If a sign is not properly installed, then the case can be deferred and/or sent back to the MAPC. So when this typically happens, there will be a question then about has substantial conformance been achieved with what the requirements are, and that's where the affidavit will be very important. So, following the MAPC meeting, staff continued to make improvements and work on this, and part of this came up as part of discussions and briefings. So attached to the staff report is an alternative version of the Unified Zoning Code amendments. It is very much the same as the version recommended by the plan, by the MAPC, but with additional text explaining that substantial conformance is achieved when the sign is installed and a completed affidavit is submitted. Now, in order to approve that alternative version, it would require an override of the Planning Commission, because they've made a recommendation to you. So therefore, it would require four out of five votes in order to approve that alternative version. So in terms of the review and update process, here is a list of the schedule of when this has been discussed and how we've proceeded through this. You can see it goes back all the way to September of 2024. So again, here is the recommended action, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott, thank you. This is something we've had several conversations about, had staff meeting about, and had some briefings. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, Scott, thanks for, we have had, as Chairman referenced, and I'm glad you all took this on to kind of define it, put some guardrails and some guidance around this. So I appreciate it, and I'd be glad to make a motion to approve at the time.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Howe?
Commissioner Chairman, just, I guess, as I'm reading, at least the PowerPoint, it's not clear exactly what's changing here. What exactly is the amendments to the sign?
Oh, okay. So first of all, the largest change is that as of right now, there's no requirement for a county, for a sign to be installed for a county zoning case.
Right.
That's the largest change.
Okay.
So then you get the recommendation from the MAPC, which would be a change to the zoning code to install this requirement in the code. Then there's a second part change, which is after the MAPC made a recommendation to you all with that, staff were looking at it, and a question came up about how to determine whether or not substantial conformance has been achieved. We started talking about that. We thought that it was covered, but in order to better clarify it, there was an additional paragraph or clause that was added to the beginning, and it is, in the colored version, it is a green, I think it's green or blue text that shows up at the very beginning of the proposed amendment to the Unified Zoning Code. And it is, it says, number one, compliance with notice requirements. And what that does is that clarifies that compliance will be deemed to have been achieved once a sign is installed and the affidavit is submitted. And what this is intended to do is to clarify by and how the governing body and the Planning Commission will judge that substantial conformance has been achieved, because sometimes there are issues that arise during the deliberations about someone saying, hey, this sign was not up and posted for the entire duration. So we wanted to be able to address what you're measuring, what you're looking at to determine substantial conformance.
So currently, on these zoning cases, the notification is sent to the owner of record in that thousand-foot radius around all of our zoning cases. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is one format. Yes, sir. The other ones are, it gets posted in the newspaper. It's another way that that happens. Those are the primary ones.
And then for CONs and PUDs, what do we do in those cases?
Those fall under the same requirements as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And what size are these signs? They're pretty small, aren't they?
I actually brought one with me today, so I will bring out the prop here.
11. Make sure Combs is here to get a picture.
So here's an example of the sign. Now, there have been some comments and discussion about the size of the sign, what information the sign displays. I would encourage that very much is a worthwhile conversation, but today, the, the subject is just whether or not signs should be required. But we're very much open to having the conversation about what format, what materials, how large.
So if we update those requirements, we'll have to update this code again to make those changes. Is that correct?
Actually, those are specified administratively, so it is a document that we do as part, that ties into the application itself as a requirement of that. So we would be able to do that outside of the code.
I'm very much in favor of more, more public transparency and awareness of what's going on. So, you know, just making sure people are aware of their opportunities to, to speak to these issues before we make decisions is really important to me. And so I'm glad there's an increased requirement for more notification. But having said that, I do think those signs are too small, and it sounds like they're intended to be reused. So you, you, I'm not sure, do you reuse these signs? Because you write them with a, it's like a Sharpie marker.
It's with a Sharpie marker, and once they're, they're used, they're done, so.
Okay. And so, you know, again, I, as I've read some of these signs, some, sometimes they're actually kind of hard to read, even if you're standing right in front of them, because sometimes the marker's kind of dry, or the, the writing's kind of sloppy. And in order to read one of these signs, you actually have to stop your car and walk right over to the sign to see it. And so if you imagine you're on Greenwich Road and the speed limit's, you know, 55, but people are going 75, and you have to stop your car to walk, you know, across the ditch to see what the sign says, which, which by the way, is parallel with the road, not perpendicular.
Yep.
And this actually shows how to place a sign, being parallel, which again, I completely disagree with. We are all elected officials, and we put yard signs out for getting people to vote for us, whatever. We never put the sign parall, or, parallel, we always put the sign perpendicular, so you can read it when you go down the street, right? So the signs are actually almost, this, this actually, you know, encourages, if you will, a really not effective sign. And to make the sign useful, it needs to be properly sized and properly placed, and needs to be readable. And I shouldn't have to stop and walk over to the sign to see it. And even then, I think there's more information, there's more information that should be added, I think, to the signs, just to make sure people are aware of, I guess, something about the case. So I think it's a discussion we need to continue. You know, you showed the timeline, how many times we've talked about this. I brought this every single time. So I'm really saying this not for your sake, but really for the public's sake to know that this is an ongoing discussion, and I think we have some work to do to get these signs to be effective, so that people are actually, are understanding what their cha, what their opportunities are and what might be changing around them. They want to know. They have a right to know. So I'll support the resolution today, but I just, I do think we have some work to do. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Justin, any thoughts?
Yes, just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm looking at Scott on this, too, just to double check. And Commissioner Meitzner, you'd made the motion on this. If I'm understanding it correctly, the staff recommendation that Scott's written today, I believe, is what's indicated in your motion sheet as option two, which would be to approve the changes with the modifications that Scott described?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's the version I would recommend that you, you do, just because it has continued to evolve, and we think we've improved it over time since the MAPC meeting.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Scott. And if that's, Commissioner Meitzner, it's your motion, so, but if, if that is your intent, then I'd probably point you to option two on the record, on the motion sheet, if you and the second would agree to modify that. It's certainly your discretion, but let me know if you have any questions on that, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So, yes, I, I had not made the motion official yet, but I will make a motion to, to the findings of the, of the Planning Commission with the option to? of the, of the Planning Commission with the option two, as referenced. Is that a misvision?
It, it might be preferable. And Commissioner, do you have that sheet with you? If not, I can...
You got the sheet?
If you would read the language, you've got a little specific there, sorry. Thank you.
That was a good, that was a good try, though.
I thought it was going to be flub-free today. Okay. I move the Board approves the proposed changes presented here, term the alternative set of potential code revisions that were crafted subsequent to the MAPC hearing. The reasons why I believe such an action is appropriate are because we wanted these additions to the, to the, we wanted these, wanted these modifications, additional modifications to this Unified Zoning Code. And that is the motion.
Okay, and that motion is seconded. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, very good. Scott, thanks for all the work you did on this and staff work, appreciate that. JR? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, DER 2024-00012, MAPD Application Fee Increase.
Scott Waddle Show today.
Back again. Well, Scott Waddle from the Planning Department. Here we go, there we go. We're almost there. Here we go. All right, so here to present this time on the Planning Department fees for county applications. So, we'll start with some background on this one. So, the Planning Department was created through a partnership between the city and the county. The partnership is formalized through an interlocal agreement. According to the interlocal agreement, the Planning Department is funded 50/50 by the city and county, with contributions being offset by application fees. And please note that zoning enforcement division is unique from the rest of the department because it's funded through reimbursements from the county. So, that's how the department is funded. Here's a graph that shows relative percentages of funding for the entire Planning Department. And again, you can see that the largest sources are from city and county general fund. So, according to Planning Department records, the last fee increase occurred in 2018. A review of the records indicate that the fee increases occurred roughly every two years prior to that. So, in terms of analysis, so between 2018 and 2023, inflation increased by nearly 20%. And that's just the context we're operating in. For Planning Department-specific costs, we wanted to look at costs associated with processing cases, so that included just the current plans division and part of the administration division. It did not include advanced plans or zoning enforcement division. And what we found is that our cost for processing it generally ranged from 72% to 76% of the overall Planning Department budget. And then, our cost recovery, which is what this shows, generally ranged from 21% to 23%. Now, this increase that you saw over time, I would attribute that to the fact that we're processing additional cases, more cases, over time that are generating additional revenues. So, and here's reflection of the number of cases. So, you can see it increases from 668 over time to 715. So, the recommended action is to increase the, the county application fees by 10%. This would result in a recovery rate of 28% for the costs incurred or expended for processing cases. The taxpayer general funds, both the city and the county combined, would subsidize 72% of processing those cases. Without the fee increase, the recovery rate is 23%. The city recently approved increasing their fees, and that would increase that cost recovery rate up to 25% over the course of a full year. It's important to note that city planning applications and the process review them are considered, this is both for city and county cases, that overall, it's generally considered to have a greater overall community benefit than individual benefit. This has been an area of discussion and deliberation over time, and that they are generally subsidized to some degree by local governments. So, in our research, we've not found any local community that requires 100% of the cost of processing cases to be covered by fees. In addition, the fee increases being considered today do not increase the MAPD budget. They simply reduce the city and county general fund subsidy for MAPD operations. So, here's an example of the fees for a variety of zoning-type cases and for a one-step plat. These are our current fees. Here's what would occur to the zoning fees if fees are increased by 10%. And note, the fees are rounded up to the nearest $5 increment, just for the ease of transactions, keeping it pretty simple. Here are plating examples. Now, on, on May 7th, the Board of County Commissioners approved waivers of MABCD fees for low-income housing tax credit projects. And we'd seen some questions come up about this in relationship with what's being proposed today. I believe these were being considered because the Kansas Housing Resource Commission has a competitive award program where local government fee waivers help make those applications more competitive. So, I just want to clarify that MABCD is a separate department and a completely different financial system, so the fee waivers are not compensated or offset by the MAPD fees that are being discussed today. In terms of process, here's a quick high level, sorry it's so complicated, but it is the Planning Department. Here's a quick and high-level overview of the process to consider the fee increases. Yes, it's a simple, simple version. In addition, I'd like to continue the discussions in the future. We've heard some feedback that it would be good to have a stakeholder engagement in the future to discuss establishing a goal level of cost recovery, which would be used to help determine when fee changes are needed in the future. So, whether that's 25% cost recovery or 30% cost recovery, establishing a certain number and letting that be our guide. So, on May 13th, Wichita City Council approved a 10% fee increase for city applications, and that is scheduled to be effective on July 1st. So, the recommended action is that the, the county commission authorize MAPD fee increase and adopt the resolution. Please note that the recommended action would be effective on July 1st, is what, that's what's recommended, and a simple majority for this case is all that's required for any action. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott, this is helpful. We've been talking about that. We also staffed this, this has been a discussion. We pushed posh from the county, we want to see what the city of Wichita was going to do. That was a 7-0 vote from the city of Wichita?
Yes, sir, yes, it was.
And again, for the public's awareness, when we talk about cost recovery, this is, right now, the local property tax dollars are subsidizing this department upwards of 75 to 70, 77 to 79%. This will reduce property tax reimbursement to roughly 72%. So, again, trying to find ways to where the users of a service are paying more of the, of the fee instead of local property tax dollars for folks that aren't using the, the service. So, that's the heart behind this, and that's been the discussion. So, Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Thank you, Chairman.
Scott, remind me again, when the last time you guys did a fee increase?
2018 is what our records show.
Yep, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay. No other questions, and I'll make a motion to adopt the findings. No, I won't. Here's what I will do. I'll make a motion to authorize the MAPD fee increase and adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Scott, thanks for all the work you guys did, appreciate it. Okay, moving forward. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, Island Annexation Request by the City of Derby pursuant to City of Derby Resolution 08-2025.
Hey, Samantha.
Good morning. I'm presenting the City of Derby Island Annexation Request. Kansas Statute 12526(c) requires, requirements for island annexation requires that the land is located within the same county as Derby. The owner or owners of the land petition for the annexation, and the B O C C by a two-thirds vote of the majority, find and determine that the annexation will not hinder and prevent growth and development of the area or that of any other city within Sedgwick County. Sub-Stat 06(c) requires the B O C make the required determination within 30 days following receipt of the resolution. Here's a timeline for you. The property owner, which is the City of Derby, requested this on April 30th. They passed a resolution on May 13th. We received a certified copy on the 14th, and we are here today, 14 days later, to consider their request. Here's a general map of the location. The annexation area is highlighted in red, and then you can see the Derby city limits. In this picture, you'll see that the annexed area is in the, I would say, cyan-blue grid areas. There's two separate parcels. On the, on the northernmost parcel, it's going to be a well, and then on the southern parcel, there will be a treatment facility and a well. For lower down south, there's also two existing wells, well number 10 and 11. Here is a picture that shows the east side, that the island annexation is on the east side of South Hillside Avenue and one mile north of East 95th Street South. The subject site is currently undeveloped with agriculture as its current land use. The owner has indicated an, an intent to develop the land for, for well sites and a water treatment facility. Here's an area of views of the subject property, and then you can see the subject property near the city borders. The Planning Department has evaluated this request. It's in Derby's planning urban, urban area of influence. It's, this annexation is consistent with the community investment plan that is approved by the Board. No other city in Sedgwick County has identified this parcel as part of its future urban growth area, and they recommend the Board make the requisite statutory findings. Services upon annexation, the City of Derby will, will become responsible for the following services: water and sewer, and sheriff and police services. Fire and road maintenance will remain the same. The city's fire department currently includes the, includes the subject site, and both the city and county's fire departments run automatic and mutual aid response. The roads will be, continue to be maintained by Sedgwick County. Public Works had noted a concern, but they have reached out to the City of Derby, and all of those concerns has been alleviated, and so Public Works is comfortable with proceeding. The recommendation today is find that the proposed island annexation by the City of Derby does not hinder the proper growth and development of the area nor any other city in Sedgwick County. Scott Knebel is present and is for the City of Derby, and I can stand for any questions.
Okay, Samantha. Appreciate that, and appreciate, Scott, that you're here today. So, before we open up for questions, the, just to clarify, the scope of our decision-making on island annexations is limited to, it does not hinder the proper growth and development of the area or the proper growth and development of any other city in Sedgwick County. That's the scope of the decision-making?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, Commissioner Howe, this is your district, so you're welcome to make a motion if you'd like.
I just wanted to ask, I think this requires a public hearing. Am I wrong about that? I don't think there's anybody here to speak on that, but just in case.
There's no statutory requirement, per se, but our county policy does require that we, it's generally up to the county manager in terms of deciding what is worthy of discussion, and it's been the practice that island annexations are one of those items that will, should be on the, on the agenda as new business and hold a public hearing. Of course, there are limited circumstances, such as the City of Clearwater's annexation for that one addition that we've put on the consent, since it's, there's been 20-odd requests for those island annexations.
It's in my notes that this required a public hearing, so maybe I'm not completely accurate in my understanding, but I had it in my notes.
Well, Commissioner, I think it's, it's of good practice if you'd like to open up. I think that's okay that we do that, and are you good with that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so why don't we pause for a sec? Why don't we open up for a public hearing? If there's anyone here that would like to make comment on, on the item M of our agenda, the island annexation request by the City of Derby, we'd open up a public hearing and entertain any comment or questions. Okay, seeing no one, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So, I have some questions for staff early, just want to clarify a few things. This doesn't have any impact on our, on our 95, which I think is good. In terms of, in terms of a service agreement for the area being annexed, the only entity being impacted by this is the actual City of Derby. So, if Derby wants to provide services to themselves, they can, certainly can do that, but there's no requirement on our part to get involved between Derby and itself. So, there's no actual service contract or service proposal, I think, required by the county in this case. I, I do think that if you go back in history, when Derby, I think over, it was a 20-year process where they, they did a, some infrastructure and started getting the water from Wichita, that, that line has been paid off. But originally, there was a, Derby used water wells, the water was very hard, and they're hitting state water limits, how much water you could use out of the ground. The state was beginning to, you know, Derby was getting, approaching those caps, and so the Derby did what they needed to do and get, and, and find, found another water source, which, water source, which was Wichita, and the water's been fantastic in Derby, but the water's also kind of expensive. So, this actually, in my opinion, is going to do a lot of things. It provides, if you will, sustainability for the City of Derby by having two sources of water. I think it potentially lowers the cost of water for the Derby, for the water that we get from, from these water wells. It actually helps Hancock Acres and other people around the area, because the theory is it might lower the water table, and they've had some, some groundwater problems with basements that were constructed prior to those water wells being shut down. So, this, by going back to drawing some water from below the ground, I think potentially has the, the benefit of lowering the water table. So, there's, I think it's all positive. I actually think this could have gone on consent, other than the public hearing requirement. And so, with that, I'm, I'm actually really looking forward to seeing Derby move forward with this project. I think it's going to be really good for, for the people of the City of Derby and a little bit beyond. I actually am a resident of Derby, so I get to benefit from this, as well as a resident of the City of Derby. I think this is good planning on their part. I appreciate Manager McCollum Magnus and Mayor Mark Stats, and as well as Scott Knebel, thank you for your work on this. He's a friend, by the way, of the county. He did, used to do a lot of work with MA, with the Planning Commission, MAPC, and of course, he moved over to the City of Derby, but Scott's been a friend up here for a long time, so I want to say thank you for your work on this as well. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion, we would take the recommended action, I'll read this, that we find that the proposed, proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and we would approve that and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Samantha, very good. Scott, thank you again, appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item N, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on May 29th, 2025.
It's probably the guy in Sedgwick County, Joe Thomas.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts we had on May 29th has two items from Public Works. The first item is the 2025 Painted Pavement Marking Project R175R. Recommendation is to accept the bid from Traffic Control Services Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $173,385. And our last item is the construction plans for Four Oak Street, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC, and it's in the amount of $443,907.15. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you for the work on this, reading through the minutes, appreciate the bid board and all the discussion that takes place in these. There's two items here, Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments on either of these items? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on May 29th, 2025. Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Joe, thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Tom? Okay, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items O through double-letter AE this morning.
Okay, Commissioners, we've been briefed on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Okay, Commissioner Howe.
I'd like to have a brief discussion on item U, so can we pull that from the rest of these and do that as a separate item, please?
Okay. We'll be pulling item U. Any other questions or any other items we'd like to pull for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve consent agenda items O through AE with the exception of item U.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, item U. Would you be able to call item U and let us know what this is? Or Commissioner Howe, you can go ahead and just get started with the discussion.
Yeah, this is a, thank you, Chairman, this is a resolution authorizing the establishment of a four-way stop at the intersection of 21st Street North and 167th Street West. Now, that's not my district, but this has been an item of discussion for a long time. Years and years, we've been talking about this. It's been deemed by many people, and I think even county commissioners, as being a very, maybe more dangerous intersection for configuration or whatever, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of points here. You know, when we had a very bad accident a couple of years ago, there was a lot of clamoring from the public to do something, and following the warrants, it wasn't really warranted to make an improvement, but we did make a change there. We added with the intersection collision warning system, which was, I would say, was experimental for Sedgwick County. I did provide a lot of data at that time, and I did say at that time, this was not a way for us to go. We spent about $125,000, maybe a little bit more money, to create, if you will, an electronic warning system that would detect traffic on 167th Street West and warn traffic on 21st Street that there was cross-traffic detected. And the accident data, I don't believe, has been substantially changed since that installation of that equipment. In fact, I believe one of the accidents did some damage to that. So here we are, we're going another way. I continue to advocate for rumble strips at this intersection, and there's a few others. I would just highlight, again, I think for Commissioners, please hear, when you have a one street that has a higher speed traffic, and the other direction is a paved road that has a two-way stop, this is a configuration where if someone misses a stop sign for some reason, very, very bad accidents can happen. And there's not a lot of intersections around the county that actually fit that configuration exactly. So I think this is a special configuration. I have a number of these, and in fact, we actually had my cabinet board went out and did a survey in my district and found every intersection that fit this. And again, I think there's some things we can do that are fairly inexpensive to enhance safety of these intersections. I think that the MUTCD does require minimum requirements for traffic controls. I think that we, again, I'll highlight once again, I think the state law ought to be, ought to allow us to exceed MUTCD when it's perceived that enhancements are making safety better at an intersection. We shouldn't be dinged on that. We should have the discretion to improve intersections by adding additional controls. Even though it may not be warranted, it may not be required, I think we have a discretion to discuss what should happen there. You know, it wasn't too long ago that I believe, you know, Sedgwick County, the street numbering, I believe it was 47th Street South in Sedgwick County, whatever that road is in Butler County, 210th or 220th, whatever it is, 120th, I forget what they call that, and Santa Fe Lake Road, they had a double fatality accident there, and their county commission, within a week, had installed rumble strips on 47th Street as it approaches that intersection. And they had three sections of ground-in rumble strips, and I say, when I say rumble strips, I'm talking about they're ground into the asphalt about a half an inch deep, maybe a little bit deeper, three-quarters of an inch deep, and there was a series of about 25 places where they dug in the road, and they were spaced, you know, a couple hundred feet apart or something like that. So as you approach the intersection, it gets your attention. So if you're on your phone for some reason, or you're half asleep, or you're just kind of getting to a daze of driving down the street and you don't see that stop sign, this gets your attention, and I think it's a very, very effective solution to a problem. It's actually fairly inexpensive, and I think we ought to be doing more of this in Sedgwick County. I think we should have a state law that says if we exceed MUTCD requirements that we have some liability coverage. I know that the, some of the accident attorneys probably would not like this, but I do think we ought to have some coverage legally to encourage us to do some of these enhancements here and there. I think it will save lives, and again, I don't remember the exact numbers here, I think there was 12 or 14 accidents at this intersection in the last year. At least one of those was an injury accident. So again, presuming that every one of those accidents probably had at least one or two cars, it could be as many as 24 vehicles damaged versus destroyed, at least one injury, maybe more injuries. And all that, in my opinion, could have been avoided very effectively had we put rumble strips in. That's my opinion. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a traffic engineer, but this is my anecdotal opinion, and I think we can do more. I think we ought to take this intersection and use this as a, again, we've already experimented for a year on ICWS, which my opinion was, I think I made arguments a year and a half ago when we considered this, that this was not the way to go, this was going to fail. I still think rumble strips is a better solution, and there's intersection in my district. Again, I would argue that my accident data and the accident data at this intersection are very close to the same, and I'd like to see rumble strips utilized in some of more of these places. I actually, I actually agree with Public Works on one point, going from a two-way stop to a four-way stop may actually increase rear-end collisions. And again, if it's not warranted to go to a four-way stop, because, again, I don't understand the math behind all that, but we're going to, we're going to go from ICWS and a two-way stop to a four-way stop, and I don't think it's clear in the resolution. I read the resolution, it doesn't even mention rumble strips. I think that may be intended, but it's not part of the discussion today. I would actually argue that what my next step that I would like to advocate for was a two-way stop with rumble strips. To me, that avoids the rear-end collisions, it's more efficient getting traffic through the intersection, and it, yes, the one thing it does that nothing else has done is wake people up. So I'm not going to support item U as is currently stated because it doesn't talk about rumble strips. I think the four-way stop is concerning, and I think the end of the day, again, if it was warranted for a four-way stop, maybe it is, I don't know that it is or it isn't. To me, this is a concession solution for the ICWS not working with the political pressure saying, please do something. I don't agree with this direction. I think that, again, if you're going to make one change, to me, it's rumble strips, and I think we can do better. So I know there is a way to do rumble strips that are on top of the surface. You'll see those at 71st or 79th Street and Clearwater Road, 135th Street West. My opinion is they're ineffective. You don't feel them, you don't, you don't, you don't really feel them because they're too thin, and they wear away, and they're, and I don't think they're very effective. The ones you grind into the asphalt, you can clear snow with a grader, they don't hang up on the blade. If you really want to add some contrast, you can paint in the bottom of those strips and make them so they have some black and white contrast or black and yellow contrast as you can see them from a distance. You can fill them in the steering wheel, you can fill them in your seat, and I think ultimately this will save lives. And so I don't know that I agree with item U as is currently written. I think we ought to have a discussion with Commissioners. I think something needs to happen here, absolutely. I just don't think this is the right answer, because I think it lacks the one thing that wakes people up. It's not clear that this is going to happen, and I think a four-way stop, again, as Lynn has already said before, when you go from a two-way stop to a four-way stop, you potentially create more accidents. So in Derby, at the intersection I was concerned about, we went from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. We're still having accidents there, continues to happen. So again, I would argue that the four-way stop isn't the best next step, and the best next step is rumble strips, ground into the asphalt. It's fast, it's inexpensive, and it's extremely effective. I'm glad I made this whole speech, I'm glad, I'm glad to have the chance to speak on this once again, but I would encourage us to not adopt item U as it currently is worded, and let's have a discussion from the VOC. But, Mr. Chairman, to the will of the board, we'll see what happens.
Okay. Commissioner Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe, for your background, and I think I was present at the meeting when you made your presentation a year or so ago. I agree that the rumble strips are needed, I agree that they need to be grinded into the asphalt, not on the, on top of it. I believe that is the plan, so I'd like to ask Lynn Packer, our county engineer, to come up and clarify that that is a part of the plan, because it'll be important to me that it is. And if you don't mind, just kind of walking us through what the next steps at this intersection is. As the Commissioner of this district, I hear a lot and see a lot of emails and phone traffic regarding this intersection, so it's important that we communicate to the public what the plans are, and you're the best guy for that job, so, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. Thank you. That is correct. Rumble strips are planned to be put on 21st Street at this particular location. Those are, if approved today, can be put in as soon as next week. We are not putting in rumble strips on 167th, which is the current stop direction. When we talked to residents north of the intersection before putting in the ICWS, which is where we considered rumble strips at that time, the resounding answer from the neighborhood that was closest to it would be affected was they were not interested in having the constant noise from rumble strips. So in that regard, we respected that situation and did not put rumble strips in with the ICWS. Commissioner Howe did mention that, you know, this is, that was an experiment we did with the ICWS. It did not garner the results that we were hoping for. Regardless, we learned from it. I think it was money well-spent. Majority of the equipment that is out there is going to be able to be utilized at traditional traffic signals and flashers at other locations. So therefore, it was a little over $116,000 was spent, but we were, the radar units that were used out there, the flashing lights, they're all going to be able to be reused at other locations. We, after we had a crash out there that took out part of the ICWS system and basically created a situation where we lost power, we reevaluated what was going on out there. There were, we did see a marked decrease in the severity of accidents after the ICWS put in, but we were still getting the crashes, and because of that, it obviously wasn't getting us the results we were looking for. Therefore, the next interim step before we go and make permanent CIP improvements, Capital Improvement Program, project, is to, is to go to a four-way stop. And with those crashes we received over the last year, we do meet that warrant for crashes at that location. We are concerned about going to a four-way stop on 21st Street because that is a long stretch that does not stop. Therefore, what we're doing to help notify drivers of this change is, obviously, we have signage out there to let them know this is a new traffic configuration that's going to go out there. We're going to have rumble strips on 21st Street, we're going to put stop bars on 21st Street as well, as well as re-mark the ones that were put in at 167th to basically brighten those up. We will have flashers that will be, that will maintain on the signs on 167th and 21st Street, and then we will have advanced warning signs, obviously, in addition to there. One thing we also did very recently with the high speeds we're getting for eastbound, for the eastbound traffic on 21st Street, we have also installed 55 mile an hour speed limit signs that are within a mile of the corridor, and I think a half mile of the corridor, just to remind the drivers out there that they're coming into a more rural area, or urbanized area, where the speed limit a mile down the road, it does start to go down to 45 and then 40. So those are the plans for this intersection at this time, and then, like I said, we do have in our CIP currently and in the proposed CIP are improvements for that intersection in the 2027, 2028 time period.
Okay, Lynn, that's helpful. Other questions? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to be clarified, so the rumble strips you're installing, are those on top of the pavement or are they ground-in?
I'm sorry?
The rumble strips you're planning to install, are they on top of the pavement or are they grounded into the pavement?
They are grounded in the pavement.
Okay, and you plan on, are you planning to add any contrast to those?
Not this time.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the things that could be done, and maybe some of these things have been done, some of these things may not have been done. I know that on, I think on 167th, there's a cross-traffic-do-not-stop sign at the intersection, both directions, both, I mean, north and south.
Correct.
Those are 48-inch stop signs.
That is correct.
Which is larger than required.
That is correct.
The law only requires, I think, 30-inch stop signs. We went 36, then we went to 48, so we're at 48 now. We could illuminate the intersection with a streetlight. I'm not sure that's been done.
That has, request has been submitted, but it has not been done yet.
Okay. There are red flashing lights for north and south traffic at these stop signs, but not before. They're at the intersection.
They are at the intersection, and then we had them overhanging with the ICWS system.
But that's going away. And then on the 21st Street traffic, there is no flashing lights for traffic going east and west at all? Like a yellow flashing light or anything?
Not currently. However, one thing that is being done, it is actually already in the process of being hung up, is we are going to go back to what was a flashing red beacons that were there back in the 80s, where you have the single LED that's going to be flashing in all four directions as a overhead flashing red.
Yellow for 24, again, if it's, I guess if it's four-way, it'd be red in both directions.
Correct. If it were, the ICWS system had yellow on 21st Street, red for 167th, this will be all four red.
So again, if it was only a two-way stop, you could have done yellow potentially for east and west and red for north and south.
And we did with the ICWS system.
Your CIP improvements down the road, there's plans for either roundabout or traffic signal.
Correct.
And in both those cases, can you give me just a really round number estimate what those cost roughly? A million dollars roughly?
We had a, I think the budget item is for $900,000.
So this was round about, about a million dollars in either one of those two situations? And again, based on traffic counts and that type of thing, maybe on accidents, something is warranted, but we have not actually done everything we can do to mitigate accidents based on, based on traffic count. Are those, is a roundabout or traffic signal warranted based on traffic?
My understanding from traffic engineer is a signal, there is no warrants for a roundabout. That is a relatively still newer improvement. However, they, it is not governed under MUTCD for the signalization it is now.
And roundabouts do take property because they have to buy right-of-way. People who live near the corner may have to lose some land for the roundabout to happen.
Potentially, yes.
So there might be an eminent domain potentially?
We do, we do anticipate whether this goes to a signalization or a roundabout right-of-way will be necessary, at least in three, if not four.
So again, I'm trying to save taxpayer money. I don't know that the roundabout or traffic signal is the right answer, because, again, the cost, again, there's things we haven't done that we could do, and I just want to say, I'm not convinced that's, again, I know it's a five-year CIP, so maybe it's way out there, we can always reconsider this, but I don't know that I agree that those are the right solutions. Again, let me just say, this intersection is, for some reason, seems to have more accidents than other intersections. There are others that are similar, okay? Like I have one in my district I've already mentioned. I don't think that every one of those is going to get the same type of CIP priority, and so I'm just concerned about, I guess, fairness from intersection to intersection and area to area, that we treat these things uniformly if possible. And I would just like to say, I would like to say, trying to install as many of these mitigations as possible to encourage safety at the intersection without changing the flow, again, I would be much in favor. I actually think the stop-ahead signs in both directions, I should say, intersection ahead sign for 21st Street and a stop-ahead sign for 167th would be, would be a great if they're not already there. I don't know if they are. In both directions, you have an intersection head sign, okay? And I think illumination is a good step. Again, the rumble strips, I think, is the one thing we have not really done. In terms of the people, they're not wanting the noise. I'd like to, if nobody wants to indicate, indicate, indicate one way or the other, that's fine, I understand what they, you know, what a non-answer would mean here, but who else besides me has gone out to actually experience rumble strips at Santa Fe Lake Road and 47th Street South? Has anybody done that? As I would tell you, I went out there to 135th and 71st, I think it is, and I experienced those. They're so quiet, in fact, I drove over them at different speeds, and they're so quiet. My opinion, they're completely ineffective. And by the way, there was a bad accident there, which, again, we politically responded by putting rumble strips in there, and I'll argue once again, those rumble strips are not effective. So I don't think they're doing what they intend to do, and again, it's only for 71st Street, there's nothing on 135th warning you. Again, a lot of these mitigations I just talked about are not there on 130, not on 135th. on 130, not on 135th. So there's things we could do that, to that intersection to enhance the safety that we've not done. And I'll say this, when I, when I was out there at 71st, again, I couldn't really even, I recorded it with my phone. I'll send you the video. It's so quiet, you really can't hear it when you're literally standing five feet from it. It's so quiet. And you really can't feel it in your seat or your steering wheel. It doesn't really wake anybody up. And there's, there's almost no contrast because there's black stripes on a black asphalt. Out there at 47th Street South, again, it absolutely wakes me up. And I'll argue, when I'm next to that, five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet away from those rumble strips, you can hear them, but they're not loud. And I would argue, people who live right next to trains don't even notice it. So again, I would, you know, asking these people, do you want rumble strips next to this intersection, and they say, we don't really want that. Again, it's an unqualified answer. And I think public safety is more important than trying to give someone an arbitrary choice in what we do for public safety. People are going to die at this intersection if we don't put good mitigations in place. And yet, they don't want to be bothered with the noise. I get that, but I don't think they know necessarily what they're talking about. There's a house at the intersection, at the intersection, at Santa Fe Lake Road in 71st Street, 47th Street, at the intersection. And I stood right there next to that house, and I honestly couldn't even hear rumble strips. So I don't think it's as big of a deal as people think it is. Can you hear them? Yes, if you're trying to hear them. Is it interrupting your sleep? Is it, is it ruining your quality of life? I don't think so. So once again, in my personal opinion, it's not that big of a problem.
And I will note, I have spoken to the current and former Butler County Commissioner, County Engineers, and I'm familiar with that situation there in Butler County. Those intersections, those rumble strips there were purposely moved further back beyond the intersection that is typical, specifically to avoid noise at the house that's at the intersection.
That may be true, but could we not do that here as well? My point is that rumble strips are very effective. If you're driving up an intersection, maybe the rumble strips are further back, but here, it wakes you up. You see there's a light ahead, you see the flashing lights ahead, you see the illuminate, you know, the illumination, the larger stop signs, all that, all that's right there in front of you. I think the rumble strips have done their job. So where you place them exactly is not as important to me, is that they're there, they're there. They're near the intersection, they don't have to be exactly some, so many feet from the back, you know, back. But at the end of the day, they are very effective. And I understand trying to be thoughtful to someone who lives right there. But you know what, if we, if we put a traffic signal in or a roundabout in, as traffic continues to increase, they're being impacted by traffic. They're being impacted by illumination or light pollution. They're being impacted by traffic signal that, again, has, you know, is very bright and it runs 24/7. At the end of the day, they're going to have some quality of life impact from any type of traffic controls we install. But the one thing I think we're not, we're not hitting here is, we're not really putting out the effective solution that reduces these accidents effectively and stops the people from getting injured and even killed. And again, I have a strong opinion about this, obviously. I just, I appreciate the people's choice, but honestly, I wouldn't give them a choice. We should do it in a way that's as least impactful to them as possible by moving the stripes where they need to be, or strips where they need to be. But honestly, I think they need to go in. And I'm going to advocate for rumble strips once again. I'm doing it right now. I'm not going to support item U as, and by the way, please clarify, item U's, I read it, it doesn't mention some of the things you talked about today. This may be what you, what you're intending, but it's all verbal. And I have nothing in writing to say that these rumble strips are going to be even installed and how they're going to be installed. Some of these things are not. The details of what we're doing here today is not defined in the resolution. So, again, I appreciate, and I love you, sir. I think you're a great guy. Huge respect for you. We just have to, we have to completely disagree on this one issue. And I think we need to have a better discussion by Commissioners to drive forward, again, the affordable, most effective solutions to save lives. And I don't think this, that's not what this one's going to do. This is going to create more accidents again, and people are going to continue to get hurt there. And then the idea of a, of traffic signal or a million dollar roundabout is going to be much more important. And again, we haven't tried the things we should be trying at this, at this stage. Things we should have tried a year ago, in my opinion. Thanks again, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Wise?
Lynn, thank you. I guess my question will be for Justin. Is there, can I make a motion to include the proposed rumble strips at this intersection for additional safety features?
I might look a little bit to both Lynn and probably Lindsey as well, because obviously the resolution that's in front of you deals with the traffic control devices of the four stop signs being placed there. I guess the first question I would have is, Lynn, I'm trying to recall if under that statute, if a rumble strip is referred to as a traffic control device?
It is not. The resolution, as I understand it, follows the state statute. The state statute requires that the Board of County Commissioners approve the traffic, the mandatory traffic control regulatory signs. And that's what is in the resolution for you. The fact that we're putting the regulatory signs, in this particular case, the only regulatory signs going up are the stop signs themselves. All the other devices that are going in are supplemental and not typically part of a resolution that we put in front of you.
And thank you Lynn, that's helpful. To your question Commissioner Wise, I didn't know if perhaps, are the rumble strips part of the CIP plan that was being proposed, or was that the other options Commissioner Howell was talking about, like roundabout or other traffic signalization? Was that, I was just trying to understand if that was, if the rumble strips are part of a CIP at all?
The rumble strips are not specifically, the CIP is not that detailed, because we do, we have not engaged with a consultant yet to design that intersection.
So I, I mean, to your question Commissioner Wise, I think if the will of the Board was to add this in there, I don't think there would be any harm in doing so. I'm not, I've seen Lynn tend to concur with that. So I think it would be permissible if there was a will of the Board to amend it that way. It'd be fine.
Okay. Well, it's important to me and to the citizens that I've been in contact with that we get this pushed forward. So I'd like to add language in here that includes the, I don't know if you'd say installation or the construction of the...
Construction of rumble strips on 21st Street, yeah.
Yes. I'd like to also consider, 167th Street, I concur with Commissioner Howell that the lives are a little bit more, they're at stake and they're more important than the noise that they're perceiving would hear in that neighborhood. So I'm not ready to, I can talk to those residents myself, and I would probably like to do that personally. But I want to make sure that this isn't done halfway.
What I may suggest is to proceed as planned right now, because right now, the crashes that we have, the one thing that did come out of the ICWS is, number one, we do have, the severity of the crashes are definitely improved. The other improvement has been that the crashes that are out there are not from the traffic on 167th Street, is from the traffic on 21st Street. So therefore, we do believe that we have a good handle on the, on the conflicts coming from 167th. So what we could do is start at this process, and then if we're seeing that there is, again, a resurgence in issues with 167th Street, once we go to a four-way, we can then definitely look into rumble strips on 167.
Yeah, I'd like to, if it passes today that we can get the rumble strips, the four-way stop, all approved today for 21st Street rumble strips, I'd like to make sure that we're open-minded to adding the 167th rumble strips as well. So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the addition of rumble strips to be constructed in the ground.
Ground.
Correct me, grounding.
Ground in, yeah.
Yep, ground-in rumble strips along 21st Street. And I'd like to move to approve that today. We have been working with Communications to make sure that we are ready to inform the citizens and the traffic that this is coming. And I think we're going to do that in a really responsible and very, we're good at communication, I think, at Sedgwick County. But we're going to go extreme to make sure that people are notified and aware of these changes. It's very important that we get this done. So I'd ask for the support of my colleagues to get this through today.
Okay. There's a motion. I'll second it. Before we call for the vote, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you Chairman. So again, what she's, what she's done to the resolution, she's added some clarification to essentially go forward with the same plan that you already had planned. I mean, nothing's changed.
Correct.
We're just codifying, if you will, a verbal commitment to doing the rumble strips. Again, can I ask a question? Why are we not going, why are we not going to do the rumble strips with the two-way? Again, rumble strips is the, is the most significant, and I would argue, we should do them both directions. So again, what I see right now is we have an option to keep this a two-way with rumble strips in ideally both directions versus a four-way with rumble strips only on 21st. Again, from my perspective, the rumble strips is the, is the most important part of this. But going from a two-way to a four-way, even you yourself said you have concern about increased accidents. When you do that, why are we, why are we jumping to a four-way?
Increased accidents on 21st Street because of rear ends. That is, whenever you add stop signs at intersection, you do increase for a, at least for a period of time, the rear end crashes, because people just are not used to having to stop there. They're not paying attention. Therefore, I do believe that the rumble strips on 21st Street are a good addition. They are appropriate. We can put them in without being close to housing that are in the area. And that's why the recommendation was for 21st Street.
So what, what impact does this have on traffic flow on 21st?
The impact is definitely going to be real, especially during commute times. Traffic is going to stop where it had not stopped before.
Okay, and guess, I guess we don't have the data then. I mean, I don't know how, I mean, if cars are going to back up a half mile trying to get through one intersection. I'm just wondering, is that, is that going to happen?
We do have, recently, we made a four-way stop at a near, at another location last year that had similar traffic counts. And although we did see some backup of traffic during the commute times, it was not significant. And traffic, we received very minor, very few complaints. And are not receiving those complaints now as drivers either find other routes that don't have to go through that area, or they're just understanding that they need to stop at that intersection now and wait for a few vehicles before they get their turn to proceed through the intersection.
I guess I'm in the minority once again, but I would, I would really, I really wish this resolution, I want to do something good. I wish the resolution was to retain the two-way stop and absolutely put the rumble strips in both directions. That's what I would prefer. So am I willing to concede to a four-way stop and rumble strips in one direction? Is that going to solve this problem? I'm not convinced that that will solve it by itself. And I don't, I guess I've not seen the data regarding which, which direction the cars were going when these accidents happened over the last year, but why did we be on 21st versus 167th? I don't quite understand that part of it. But anyway, I want to be supportive of my colleague here. I just, I think, again, I've been, I've been harping on this thing for years now. And here we sit. And I just don't, I wish I could get one intersection configured correctly to see how it works. You would, we experimented with, we experimented with ICWS, the data wasn't great. And here we are. We're going to go down another direction, and I think that there's reasons why this isn't the best solution. So I hate to be this way, but I guess I'll vote against it, only because I'm advocating for what I think is the better solution. But I do support at least doing what you're doing today, Commissioner Wise. I just wish we could do one more, one more step a little bit further, but that's all right. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. We're on item U. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Lynn, thank you. Appreciate the clarity. End of discussion. Madam Clerk, let's move on. Next item.
Budget discussion.
Okay, we do not have a budget discussion planned for today. Two quick thoughts on that. Number one, I would encourage the public, we had budget hearings that lasted almost two weeks. So I would encourage you to go to our social media on Sedgwick County, Sedgwick County's Facebook platform, but YouTube channel primarily is where all of these, you can re-watch those. And also, just for the public's awareness, this is an added item for the remainder until we pass a budget in August. This is used for Commissioners to bring ideas, vet ideas, and prepare staff to ask questions. And then staff can do their homework and bring it back to the Commission in different, a variety of different settings. So we're not trying to do this from the bench on Adoption Day, and we have plenty of time to make vetted decisions. So you'll see this budget discussion line item for the remainder of the way through August. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Federal grants discussion.
We also have no updates today on federal grants. We have the committee that meets every Friday, and they give an update to the Commission. Nothing today. That's good news. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share with the public? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Thank you very much Chairman. I just wanted to speak about the 2025 appeals and kind of give a residential. It looks like out of 5,653 residential appeals, there are only about 30% of residential appeals that saw a value adjustment. So I guess if folks still think that their value is more than what they can sell it for, is what I generally use, I would encourage them to go ahead and go to the, to the next, next step, whether that be the municipal court or they go through the BODA. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Laura Elkhire from Meals on Wheels. Friday was her last day. 39 years she's been down there at Meals on Wheels. She was part of the transition whenever they bought the church in Delano in 1990, and she's been a, been very effective and appreciate everything that she's done down there. If anyone's around Riverfest tonight, at 5:30, I'm going to be in the ice cream meeting contest. I'm going to be representing Starkey, so if I, if I win, it'll be a $3,500 donation to Starkey, so.
Come on, man, win that thing.
Yep, I know. I'm trying my best.
You need an egg toss.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks Commissioner Meitzner for participating in the egg toss with me. I, we didn't make it past the first round, and we went back through some video and pictures, and it looks like there's been accusations that maybe your egg was cracked when you threw it at me.
Yeah, a little egg on my face on that one, so.
And then lastly, I want to give a shout out to my son Sam. He turns 13 today.
Oh, great. Happy birthdays. Yeah. Okay, anything else under other? I would just said, before I came to the BOCC meeting this morning, I gave a welcome address to the Register of Deeds Annual Conference. It's being held here in town, at the invitation of Tanya Buckingham. So all the Register of Deeds throughout the state of Kansas were here, and they're going to have a great conference for a couple of days. And that's an annual conference that we haven't hosted in several years here at Sedgwick County, so we're delighted to have them all here and enjoy our community. Okay, anything else? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session. Commissioner Meitzner will make the motion.
Okay, glad to Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 12:20. To discuss personal matters, personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to a management position, and that the Board of Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 12:20.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll break. See you back here at 12:20.
Okay, we are back from that discussion through executive session. I think we're going to go back and have a follow-up discussion. So Commissioner Meitzner, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I will move that the Board of County Commissioners continue to recess into executive session for an additional 20 minutes until 12:40 p.m. to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel related to management position.
Okay, welcome back. Thank you for your patience. There was no binding action taken today in executive session. So is there anything else that needs to come before the commission? Okay, seeing none, have a wonderful Wednesday. We're officially adjourned. We're officially adjourned.